Planning Commission, we're going to first go to roll call. So I would ask our staff representative to do that via voice roll call. And I'm going to turn off my microphone for a moment and have the other six commissioners come online to do that.
And this is Ellen Kokinda. So it looks like we may have lost Allison. So I am going to ask Mrs. Rydell as PC Secretary to unmute herself and do roll call, please.
I think we also, I'm looking for Commissioner Lodge. I don't see her webcam on.
Just a reminder, we only, we can only, we have a maximum of six webcams.
There she is. Excellent. Very good.
This is how we roll call? Yes, I will take roll call. Thank you so much. Chair Schwartz?
Here.
Vice Chair Wiscombe?
Here.
Commissioner Bonderson?
Here.
Commissioner Escobedo?
Here.
Commissioner Higgins?
Here.
Commissioner Lodge?
Here.
Commissioner Reed?
Here.
Thank you so much.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Rydell. So now I'm going to turn my webcam back on and we're going to proceed with our preliminary matters. First, I believe to Ms. DeBust, do we have any requests for continuances, withdrawals, postponements, or addition of ex-agenda items today?
No, Madam Chair, we do not.
Okay. Any announcements and appeals?
No announcements, no appeals.
Okay, we're then going to move to the next item, which is a review, consideration, and action on our April 6, 2020 Planning Commission Special Meeting Minutes. Are there any requests or identification of revisions to those? Commissioner Wiscombe?
No, Madam Chair, I had none. I was just going to make a motion to approve them.
Very good. And until we get a second, does anybody else have any contributions to the minutes? Are we ready to go to a second? I think I heard Commissioner Lodge. Okay, without any further discussion, we have a first by Commissioner Wiscombe, second by Lodge. All those in favor?
Aye.
Please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, any abstentions? No, we were all here last Thursday. Very good. So that's unanimous for your record-keeping, Ms. Rydell. At this time, we're going to turn to comments from any members of the public on items not on our agenda. And I'll go to staff to identify for us whether or not we have any public commenters today.
Madam Chair, this is Ellen Kokinda. We do not have any, or just to be clear, we have on the screen, how do you make an oral public comment? I do not see anyone in the audience who's raised their hand. So I will turn it back over to you to continue.
Thank you very much for creating that slide. I think that's going to be very helpful going forward, Ms. Kokinda and the rest of staff for that work. All right, now we're on to Roman numeral three. It's a new item. It's an application of Patsy Price from Brownstein Hyatt Farber Shrek, agent for Gleta West Sanitary District for One Clyde Adams Road. So this is the general plan designation of the Gleta Slough Natural Reserve. And at this time, do we have our staff present to provide a presentation?
Yes, Madam Chair, Andrew Vermont, project planner for this project.
Excellent. Welcome, Mr. Vermont. I think this is your first time with us in virtual mode.
It is, yes. And thank you for being so accommodating during the emergency to have the commission take place online as it's doing now. We have my presentation up, so I'll go ahead and get through that. It's a relatively brief presentation. Then we also have both Patsy Price and Mark Nation, the General Manager of the Gleta West Sanitary District, who have indicated they'll be available for questions.
Okay, could you please tell us, Mr. Vermont, how to spell?
So it looks like we...
I would be happy, or whatever, but I think we've lost Commissioner or Chair Schwartz.
Madam Chair, if you can hear us, somehow your webcam kind of timed out, so we lost you for a moment. If you wouldn't mind, it seems like it's, it looks like our consultant Leah is going to send you a chat message.
Okay. I can see myself. Can you see me now?
We can hear you again, yes. But you cut out, so go ahead.
Can you see me again now?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so I'm back. Very good. I don't know, I didn't, I didn't get a pop-up message, so I don't know what occurred. Okay, very good. And then back to you, Mr. Vermont, you were going to give us, I think, the last name of another participant today.
Yes, Mark Nation, N-A-T-I-O-N, is the General Manager.
Okay, very good. So the sequence, Mr. Vermont, is you'll provide us the staff presentation, and then we will go to a presentation by Ms. Price, is that correct?
No, the applicant does not have a presentation.
They don't have a separate one. Okay, very good. And so then for the commissioners, after Mr. Vermont's presentation, if there are any urgent questions from the commission, we could go to those. Otherwise, I'm going to ask if there are any public comment, commenters wanting to speak on this item. If not, we'll bring it back to the commission for questions. And if there are very few, we might just blend questions and deliberation. Thank you, Mr. Vermont. Go ahead and proceed.
All right, if we can move on to my first slide, it's a description of the proposed project, which is to convert a building currently known as Pump Station 2 to an operations building and increase the floor area by just under 400 square feet. But inclusive of a subsurface filling, so a demolishing of floor area, so to speak, of 2,784 square feet of existing floor area. The project also includes an addition of 900 square feet to an equipment garage, which I'll show on a subsequent slide. There's also some interior changes to the administration building, which aren't subject to coastal development permit application, but we'll see as part of the project plans. So if we move on to the background for the project. For those of you who have been on commission for a while, you may remember a project that looked like this. This was a project that was reviewed and approved by Planning Commission in 2016. That application expired two years from the date of issuance. And 2018, the sanitary district still wishes to pursue the project, and so they've resubmitted to get a coastal development permit again. We'll move on to the project vicinity. It is located in the southwest corner of the airport property, which is incorporated into the city of Santa Barbara through a maritime shoestring annexation that took place in the 1960s. The project site is only accessible from UCSB property by a Mesa Road, but is in the city of Santa Barbara and on city of Santa Barbara property managed by the airport. It is, however, under a utility easement to the benefit of the Gleta West Sanitary District. So it's sort of the unusual regulatory structure for how we get this project before this commission. And then we'll move on to the site plan, where we have both the new floor area, if you can proceed through those. There we are. So we have the new floor area, which is being added to the garage and the small addition to Pump Station Number 2 in, in blue, the demolition and reconstruction of the existing surface level of Pump Station 2 is shown in, I think it's red on my screen, maybe more brownish. And then there are also the interior improvements, as I mentioned, that are included in the application to the administration building. The next slide shows a number of floor area changes. I thought this slide might be helpful, even though we're not reviewing this project for floor area. It also helps to address a comment that was made at the, at the site visit that corrects the table in Section 5B of the staff report, which misrepresents the floor area of the pump station by including the entire platform's floor area, not just the portion that's a developed building. So anyway, the administration building does not have a change in floor area. The garage, as I mentioned, would increase by 900, Pump Station 2, despite increasing its surface floor area is a net reduction in total floor area because of the demolition of the two subsurface stories. And the generator is also included in the total for the building. It's sort of, it's an attached, small closet space, basically. So resulted in a net reduction of 1,488 square feet of non-residential floor area, which remains as a, remains developable on the site that could be used for a future project. Now, if we move on to the next slide, the specific application is for a coastal development permit. The standard of review pursuant to Title 28 of municipal code is that Planning Commission find the project consistent with the California Coastal Act and consistent with the local coastal program, in this case, the Airport and Gleta Slough Coastal Plan, as well as implementing guidelines and zoning ordinance. So we'll go briefly through each of those and then we'll conclude. So first of all, there's not a, a change to public access or recreation or marine environment as the Coastal Act protects. The project is generally consistent with the development of the vicinity, it being a utility campus. And while it is in a flood zone, it would not be introducing new populations to, to a flood hazard. And so with respect to the local coastal plan, the policies are similar to the Coastal Act in many ways. The staff found the project to be generally consistent with the coastal plan in that there's not a change to base flood elevation, it's not in an identified sensitivity zone or scenic view shed, and the project doesn't have a change to water, wastewater, or parking. However, if on the next slide, I want to highlight policy C4, which is a relatively long policy, but in short, it identifies a 100-foot buffer around creeks and wetlands. And the, this site in particular is surrounded on all sides by wetland habitat, on three sides by the Gleta Slough, and on the fourth by the sore wetland at UCSB. So I've drawn on this slide a approximate 100-foot buffer, which would exclude almost the entire project. The administration building would fall outside of the 100-foot buffer, but everything else on the site would be excluded. And so staff's position is that Planning Commission could find that respecting the 100-foot buffer for this, this project at this site would not be feasible. And in effect, that would be one of the conclusions that you would come to in making the findings from the staff report. If we move on to the next slide, the implementing guideline that's relevant to this project is the airport design guidelines. They include very broad sort of qualitative goals that, that the project is generally consistent with. Staff's position is that it's consistent, its consistency is essentially determined by the Architectural Board of Review. If ABR is able to find the project is compatible with its area, then it's meeting these standards of cohesiveness and quality of renovation, et cetera. So we'll move on to the zoning ordinance. The Aviation Facility Zone is the zone that's been designated for this site. It's principally oriented toward aviation development. However, there is a clause at the end of the permissible uses, Section T, that allows for uses that are determined not to be in conflict with aviation by both the airport and community government directors. And both directors did make that determination in a letter to the Gleta West Sanitary District that's included in the application. The next slide includes the environmental review. Staff found it exempt under the small addition exemption, that's class, Section E of Class 1. And finally, the last slide, or the next slide, is the review by ABR. ABR reviews this, reviewed this project back in 2016, but reviewed it again last month. They found that the project compatibility criteria had generally been met and continued the item to Planning Commission with favorable comments. And so our, the staff's conclusion is that Planning Commission is recommended to approve the coastal development permit, applying the findings, recommended findings in Section 9, and subject to the conditions of approval in Exhibit A. And as I mentioned, I, Patsy Price, and Mark Nation are available for commission's questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vermont. To staff, perhaps, Ms. Kokinda, just a question as to whether or not we have any members of the public who would like to comment on this item today?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is Ellen Kokinda. Thank you for putting up the slide, Timmy. We do not have anyone who's raised their hand at the moment, so I would like to hand it back over to you.
Okay, could you just walk through again? We may need to do this for several hearings for members of the public, where they can find, I know you have a slide up, is it consistent on everyone's devices where to find that hand? Should they want to press that and comment?
So I'm gonna, if, Timmy, would you mind going back to that, how to make an oral public comment? So this is the go-to webinar control panel, if you are an attendee or a member of the public. So when members of the public use their, the login information that's listed on the agendas that are posted the Thursday before the hearing, they will log in and their control panel looks different from the other commissioners. And so there, you can see the red arrow is pointing to a hand icon. So when you open up public comment, if someone's joined via the webinar, they would be able to click on that hand icon. And then, and then it would indicate to me, as I'm managing the list of who wishes to speak, and then I would let you know and unmute them, and then they would have a chance to use their two minutes. We've also, something different from the last meeting, Mr. Bolton ended up creating a timer, so a visual timer for the time that people have for public comments. So it's really clear to the chair and commissioners, as well as to members of the public, when someone's time is up. I can say that it might look a little bit different if someone is calling in on their mobile phone or on an iPad. But generally, I've seen a screenshot of what that looks like, and the hand icon may be at the very top of their screen. So for the most part, if someone's joining via the web on a desktop or laptop, it will look like the screen that we posted. If not, it'll still be a hand icon, but it just might be at the top of your screen. So thank you very much. And I still don't see any members of the public who raised their hand.
Commissioner Wiscombe, did you want to, did you have something to say at this time?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to say that I used this system this morning at the, at the Water Commission meeting, and it, it worked very well. And I appreciate Mr. Bolton putting that timer up there, because when it came my time to speak, I just had this big slide of this two-minute clock there, and so I knew exactly how much time I had. So that was extremely helpful, and I think it'll keep these remote meetings running efficiently. Thank you.
Good, so very, a very conspicuous clock that Mr. Bolton has created. Commissioner Higgins? Did you want to, on the minutes?
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can, thank you.
I was gonna say, maybe we should have some of those, those camera or the clock running for commissioner questions at some point, but...
I'll go ahead and manage that. I think that'll be...
My question, yeah, my question is for Mr. Vermont on the item. Would it be inappropriate, or maybe give me some background on, in addition to the standard review items you have on the slide, that given this is a permit that was reviewed before and approved by the commission, unless we have change in circumstances, perhaps new ordinances or updates to policies, really, it's, it's, it's the same project or the same codes. Now, not to, not to stifle anybody's questions or comments, because it is a different commission, that could be viewed as a change in circumstances, but in fairness to the applicant, we would be maybe at a stretch to come up with a different conclusion that has already been before this commission. Any comments on that perspective?
Mr. Vermont, before you begin, I'm going to turn off my webcam, and I'd like the other commissioners, well, Commissioner Higgins, if you wouldn't mind, just so we can have the remaining five commissioners on, I'd like all of you to have an opportunity visually and audibly to ask any questions. And so I'm gonna go off and ask the others to come on for questions of Mr. Vermont. Let me just do that right now.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And Commissioner Higgins, you're, you're right in that what we don't have in the city of Santa Barbara is a mechanism separate from a reapplication or a reissuance of an expired permit. We do have a mechanism to extend an expiration date, but we cannot do that retroactively. I might defer to City Attorney's Office for more detail on that.
Commissioner Wiscombe, did you have any questions at this time for Mr. Vermont or the larger applicant team?
Yeah, I do have a series of questions, but I believe Ms. Ostranger is on to answer about the CDP extension.
Oh, there you are. Yes, High Assistant City Attorney, Ostranger.
Thank you, Chair Schwartz. Commissioners, I just wanted to follow up on Mr. Vermont's comment. He is correct, we don't have a mechanism to extend an expired permit. When a permit expires, it cannot be extended. If the applicant had perhaps requested the extension prior to the expiration, we could have considered it. The reason we can't extend an expired permit is because a permit conveys a vested right. And what that generally means is that the permit conveys to the developer the right to proceed under the laws and conditions existing at the time that the application was granted. This creates equity for both the applicant, developer, and the city in that if the projects and the laws change while the project is being completed and prior to being finished, the applicant doesn't have to change the project with changing laws. This keeps the cost down for the applicant and also makes the project move forward. And similarly, with respect to the city, if the applicant allows a permit to expire, and during that time, there's been changes in laws, perhaps more stringent changes in laws that are usually adopted to protect health, safety, and welfare, it allows us to then reapply those laws and ensure that the project complies with the current laws and conditions. So I hope that answers the question.
Well, wasn't really the question I asked, but I, it's good information and background. I guess the specific question is, do we have any changes in circumstances or changes in policies or laws pertaining this project since it was approved?
Commissioner Higgins, there, there is a, there has been a change to the, our local flood ordinance, as well as the state flood ordinance. And the site is altered in response to that in the proposed, the permitted but not constructed flood wall to address that. So it's, it's a change in condition, but it's one that's being, that's intended to be met by a separate project that has already been reviewed and approved. Included in your conditions of approval is a requirement that that flood wall be installed and completed prior to certificate of occupancy for this project.
Okay.
So that's how we're meeting that changing condition.
Yeah, I guess the question is about policies that have changed, the references, there's a reference in the staff report, that it's an identical project to what was already approved. So that was sort of the basis for my question, but I'll, I'll think about any other questions I may have and sign off for now.
Thank you, Commissioner Higgins. Commissioner Wiscombe and any other commissioners, would you come online with your webcams and audio questions for Mr. Vermont? Commissioner Wiscombe, you're back on.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just have a couple of questions. I want to, first of all, thank Mr. Vermont for clarifying the, the square footage chart. I really appreciate that. That, that was, that was very well done. I had a question, I have a couple of questions on the conditions of approval, and the first one is on page four of eight on the C of A, under 4A, it says reclaim water should be used wherever possible for dust prevention during construction. So I just wanted to know, is this reclaimed water suitable for discharge or runoff, given the proximity to the slough?
And Commissioner Wiscombe, can I ask Commissioner, excuse me, Mr. Vermont, or maybe Mr. Bolton, do you have the conditions of approval handy such that you could put this up? We, we're at a slight disadvantage the way we're working virtually, but I think it'd be helpful for all of us to see that. And I see it's coming up on the screen now, if we could go to the reference that Commissioner Wiscombe's making.
This is on page four of eight of the C of A, under 4A. I don't know if you can go to page four. It's, it's not very legible on our screen, because, yeah, that's great, yeah. So where it talks about air quality and dust control.
Yes, Commissioner Wiscombe, that's a good question. It's the, in addition to the best management practices condition, we should be retaining water during construction onsite. It would end up in the sanitary district's storm drain system, which ties into its sanitary sewer system. So with the best management practices for containment of runoff onsite applied, we should not have any discharge into the Gleta Slough. However, if there was incidental discharge, it should be noted that reclaimed water doesn't meet the standards for discharge into the wetland. It's generally cleaner than stormwater itself.
Okay, thank you for that. Okay. And then I wanted to go to the conditions of approval, page five of eight, and it's number five, asbestos and lead-containing materials. And I was just curious, has the pump station actually been tested for asbestos pursuant to APCD? Or is this something that will occur prior to the demolition?
Commissioner Wiscombe, it has not, to my knowledge, the applicant may have that information, but this is a condition that the Air Pollution Control District would require of this project, with or without one of those reports, just because of the age of the building.
Okay, yeah, that's why, that's why I was concerned about that. Okay, and then on page, same conditions of approval on page seven of eight, under G1. I wonder, is there a window of time for this work? In other words, does the Gleta Slough have any species that would be of concern during construction, given the proximity of the work to the slough?
Chair, or Vice Chair Wiscombe, not specifically any special status species that use the project site. It's theoretically possible for construction-related noise to haze wildlife during construction. We don't anticipate that in, with this project, especially given the existing noise profile around the Gleta Slough.
Okay, thank you for that. I just have a couple more questions. On the operations building demolition plans, this would be Plan Set O-D100. It says demolish the lower wet well, to demolish or remove and salvage existing grading platforms, stairs, and equator. stairs, and equipment. So my question was, is any of this going to be reused? Do we, do we know that? Or, so it's either demolish it or remove and salvage it. So are we reusing any of this equipment in an effort to recycle, you know, products?
Commissioner Wiscombe, whether it's being reused onsite or being relocated and recycled first, I don't know. That would be a question for the applicant.
Okay, well, maybe they won't answer that then when they come up. And my last question is, under the Plan Set OD101, note two talks about the removal of the ballards. And so I was wondering, will the pipe ballards be removed around the fuel tank, the existing ballards around the fuel tank during construction? Because then following note after note number two says that the fuel tank needs to be protected during construction. So if the ballards are removed, how is the fuel tank protected?
Commissioner Wiscombe, there are a number of methods that could be used, such as K-Rail, but you would need to make sure that there could not be incidental. That's sort of up to the contractor, that is how that is effectively planned. But there are a number of different methods that you can use to physically protect the, from accidental backup of a truck or something. The reason for those ballards to be displaced long-term is because the ones that are on the side about the trash enclosure would no longer be necessary.
Okay. Thank you. That concludes my questions. Thank you very much for your answers. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Reed, questions for Mr. Vermont?
Yes, thanks, Madam Chair. Good afternoon, Mr. Vermont. So first, first question is on storm water man. On the staff report, page five, under environmentally sensitive habitat, it, it says that this project is in compliance with the Tier Three onsite stormwater treatment requirements. And it doesn't go into a lot of detail about that, but just looking at your, your plan set, under lot coverage data, it's, the first page in, SPD100, it states that there is replaced impervious area, proposed of 1,400 square feet, 1,436 square feet. And it's just my understanding that with our current stormwater requirements, I believe that there is a trigger for over 500 feet of new or replaced impervious area. So I just wanted to get some clarification on that.
Madam Chair and Commissioner Reed, thank you. That's a good question and it highlights something that's pretty unusual about this site. The, you're correct in that this project needs to comply with Tier Three of our stormwater management plan, which requires retention and treatment onsite for greater than one inch and 24-hour storm. And the way that the Gleta West Sanitary District treats onsite and limits runoff is through capturing its stormwater into its sanitary sewer system. And although that's not what we would currently permit, that's an existing system that is allowed to continue to operate. The, so all of the stormwater is ultimately treated to be discharged by the Gleta Sanitary District after it's gone through their system. So it's an unusual and perhaps overscape, over-scope stormwater management system. That's what, that's how that's addressed. And both community development and creek staff reviewed their stormwater report, reaching that conclusion.
Okay. So is it an exception then that is being provided, but it doesn't compromise the stormwater requirements? You're still treating the water to the standard for a normal project. You may even be exceeding it because of the systems you have.
Commissioner Reed, that's, that's correct. It's significantly higher standard when it's discharged to the Pacific than it would be in a typical project at this site where we would be using bioswales or retention uses.
Gotcha. Okay, that clarifies that. And then in the same section of the staff report, page five, section, this, number three, environmentally sensitive habitat, it, second paragraph states that the proposed additions would occur on existing impervious surfaces and are sited toward the interior of the property away from the Gleta slough. Thus, the proposed project would not further encroach on the Gleta slough wetlands. My only question for clarification would be the addition of the trash enclosure. And if that potentially is an avoidable encroachment on the slough.
It is potentially avoidable. Commissioner Reed, I, we, I know that the applicant looked at a number of other locations onsite. There's a number of constraints with respect to both their vector truck turning radius as well as fire engine turning radius that limit the available existing impervious surface. There is a lawn area to the north side of the site that would not be part of any turning radius to be available as an alternative site, but staff's sort of interpretation is that the placement of it on existing impervious site is preferable to increasing impervious surface.
Gotcha. Okay. And then my last question that was brought up on the site visit is in regards to the conditions of approval, this is page two of eight, under section C of design review. So I believe these are conditions set by AB, as it was continued to planning commission. And I think I've answered my own question here, but this states that the dumpsters and containers with a capacity of one and a half cubic yards or more shall not be placed within five feet of combustible walls, openings, roofs, unless protected with fire sprinklers. And it's, I think your plan shows 95-gallon containers, so those are like half a cubic yard. So is my understanding correct that that exempts you from the distance requirement? Because I believe it's within five feet and a generator room, which is neither combustible wall, opening roof, but it is a combustible element, I suppose. So that, that would be my, my last question.
Commissioner Reed, I agree that the, effectively, the project as it's currently designed shows the trash enclosure containing 95-gallon containers that would be a mitigation, that'd be an alternative to using a, a, you know, larger three-by-six roll-off dumpster, which you might otherwise use at the site, specifically to avoid having to apply that safety buffer. However, the, so if the project were to be revised when it came in for building plan check or any sort of subsequent period with a different trash collection system, we would still need to have that condition because it's within four feet of the tank.
Okay. That, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Bonderson, questions for Mr. Vermont?
Yes, thank you. I am going to piggyback my questions off of Commissioner Reed, simply because he took the words right out of my mouth. And I only have one remaining thought. So thank you, Commissioner Reed, for, for handling all those questions. I wanted to just follow up with the question of the trash enclosure. You may recall that I asked this question at the site, and I wanted to know if on the building footprint, with all of the designed uses on the inside of the structure, if there was any possibility to accommodate the trash enclosure on that, within that footprint, without compromising the uses and needs that are within the structure itself and the purpose that you, you use that space for? Would there have been an opportunity to access the trash enclosure on a different side that, of course, does not conflict with a ramp or with distances that are required for trash pickup in order to keep it off of the eastern wall towards the, the natural elements?
Commissioner Bonderson, I, I would agree that it's at least possible for it to have been included as a cutout on either the north or south elevation, the western side having the ADA ramp. That was a design choice made by the applicant, specifically because they're attempting to meet a particular need for their operations floor area.
I guess the only question I have here, and this may go back to the group as a whole, is in the event that there is a desire to avoid the encroachment of the trash enclosure on that, on that eastern side, perhaps at a later time of design, as you mentioned yourself, going back for building and safety and so on, if there may be an opportunity at all, if it's even within our, our conversation here, to suggest or encourage that to be revised? And how will we address that?
Thank you, Commissioner Bonderson. Commissioner Escobedo?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Vermont, do you know if, so during the site visit, I was happy to hear that the building was going to be LEED certified and will also have solar on the roof? Do you know if battery storage was ever considered? I know that there's an emergency generator that's likely powered by diesel. And I'm kind of thinking of using that solar and pairing it with battery storage to layer the resiliency of the building and offer an emissions-free opportunity for resilience?
Commissioner Escobedo, I'm not aware of that being included in any of the iterations of the project that have been submitted to the city. I, I agree with your sentiment that that would be increased resiliency and a greening of the project. However, I can state that for other airport projects where we've included battery storage, if it's critical infrastructure, we still have to have a diesel generator as part of the project. So it would be essentially having two generator room-sized spaces, one for the battery storage and another for the diesel, which is the backup to the backup in that case.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner Escobedo. Any other commissioner questions? Otherwise, we can roll right into comments. And of course, if there are not comments, we can also just entertain a motion and a second to move the required application of the coastal development permit forward. Commissioner Wiscombe?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to say, I, I think the project is, given the constraints of the site, and I think the architecture is, is applicable. I think the project has been thoughtfully designed, given the constraints of the site. And I can totally support the coastal development issuance of the coastal development permit for the project and would be happy to make a motion when you're ready. Or if you want me to make it now, I will.
Thank you. I'll just add that my commissioners were, fellow colleagues were very thorough, and I don't have any outstanding questions or further comments at this time, so I don't see any other need for discussion. We're ready for a motion if you'd like to make it, Commissioner Wiscombe.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that the planning commission make the following findings, which are found on page seven of our staff report, under number nine, to support approval of the proposed project and subject to the conditions of approval. So we're approving a coastal development permit and subject to the conditions of approval, which are found, I've got my pages out of order, but subject to the conditions of approval that accompanied our, our staff report.
Second.
Thank you.
We have a first by Wiscombe, a second by Higgins, and we have the findings on our screen for everyone to reference. Let's see, and so to that, is there any discussion on the first and the second, the motion? None. So with that, I'm going to ask staff to please do a voice vote, and I'm going to turn off my microphone and my camera for a moment. Staff, if you would please move forward in calling for a vote on the motion.
This is Heidi Rydel. I'll take the real call vote. Chair Wiscombe? Or Chair Schwartz, I apologize.
Aye.
Vice Chair Wiscombe?
Aye.
Commissioner Bonderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Escobedo?
Aye.
Commissioner Higgins?
Aye.
Commissioner Lodge?
Aye.
Commissioner Reed?
Aye.
That is unanimous. Thank you.
Very good. So Mr. Vermont and the rest of the applicant team, this passes unanimously. There is a 10-day appeal period to anybody looking to appeal it to city council. And with that, I believe we've now closed this item. We're going to let staff set up for the next item, so we're going to take a five-minute recess in the next item. Let me just read it into the record, is the zoning ordinance text amendment pertaining to the definition of hotels and similar uses. My clock says 1:54, so we will come back at 2:01. Thank you very much. We're in a five-minute recess.
And Madam Chair, this is Ellen Kokinda. I just want to say that I'm going to go ahead and mute all of the panelists and make sure that all of their webcams are off, so.
Thank you very much.
So that people won't hear any background noise.
Very good. Thank you. Very good. Thank you. Is the zoning ordinance text amendment pertaining to the definition of hotels and similar uses? I believe we're going to have a staff presentation by Ms. Ostringer, and while we're getting set up to do that, I want to explain to my colleagues how I'm going to proceed with this item. We'll first have that presentation, as I mentioned, by Ms. Ostringer, then we're going to go to any comments from members of the public, if we have them, and then back to the commissioners for questions. And I want to tee this up to you, colleagues, that here's the order in which I'm going to ask you to participate in your questions, and I'll tell you why. The general nature of this item relative to the municipal code and a discussion of hotels and similar uses is not new for this Planning Commission. Those of us who have been serving on the commission for a number of years have experienced and participated in this, and so I would first like the more seasoned commissioners to come online and ask their questions. So here's the order in which I'm going to call on you. Commissioner Higgins will go first, then I'm going to ask Commissioner Whiskom to come online, then Commissioner Lodge, then Commissioner Reed, Commissioner Bonderson, Commissioner Escobedo, and then I will go last. So if you would please be poised to do that as we move through the item, I would very much appreciate that. And again, I'll I'll call on you just to help with the sequencing. So if Ms. Ostringer is ready, if we could ask her to come online with her webcam and audio, I think we're ready to start.
Thank you, Chair Schwartz, commissioners. So what we're going to be, and at first I did to apologize if it looks like I'm not looking at you. My webcam is slightly off-center, so when I look at the screen, I can't look at you. What I'm asking, and we are asking the commission to do today, is consider a zoning ordinance text amendment pertaining to the definition of hotel and other similar uses. Specifically, we are amending section 30.295.040 of the municipal code to add the language vacation rentals to our definition of hotel use, and I'll get into that in a minute. And then after the presentation, I'll be recommending that you forward the amendment to the City Council to approve the text. Next slide, please. Thank you. So before we get into the actual text amendment, I wanted to talk about why we're doing this. The city has had a consistent policy since at least 1983 to prohibit short-term rentals in our low-density residential zones. The short-term rental is considered a rental of property for 30 consecutive days or less. We've applied this consistently in both the inland zone and the coastal zone. Recently, however, we have been engaged in litigation with property owners who are asserting their rights to operate short-term vacation rentals or renting their private homes for periods of 30 days or less, and they are attempting to allege that the city's ordinance and definition of hotel use does not apply to these short-term rentals. So in order to avoid the costly litigation, we and City Council has adopted on March 3 an interim urgency ordinance that became effective on March 3 to add short-term resident or short-term vacation rentals to the definition of hotel uses. The interim urgency ordinance was set to expire on April 18, and this Tuesday, council moved to extend that deadline and expiration to March 3 of 2021 or until a permanent ordinance was adopted. And City Attorney's Office was committed to bringing this permanent ordinance to them by September of this year, and we're hoping that we can actually get it to them next next month. Next slide, please. So I wanted to go over the findings and determinations that the City Council made in their interim urgency ordinance, and which, if the Planning Commission moves this forward, you will also be agreeing with. These findings and determinations are important because it illustrates how this change is not a policy change, per se. It's just simply clarifying our existing and historical application of the ordinance. The purpose, as you'll see in the finding A, of prohibiting short-term vacation rentals in residential neighborhoods is to preserve the quality of life that the residents expect in these well-planned zones. And one means of assuring this is to ensure that we regulate commercial transit uses in these residential neighborhoods. And what does this really mean, and why why are we trying to reach this goal? It's simply to prevent nuisance activity that often arises with short-term vacation rentals. I'm talking about the party houses, the loud noises, the general lack of neighborly feeling as transient occupancy moves through these properties. It's also important to remember that these are sources of valuable housing stock within a time of a housing crisis, and we want to preserve as much as possible the housing in our residential neighborhoods. Next slide, please. Thank you. And as I mentioned, we've been asserting that short-term rentals are considered a hotel use since 1983, and specifically, the language in our ordinance says including but not limited to auto courts, bed and breakfasts, inns, hotels, motels, et cetera. It doesn't specifically identify short-term vacation rentals. However, it's important to note that the not limited to language is intended to convey a opportunity to consider uses that may not have been contemplated at the time that the ordinance was drafted, perhaps short-term rentals at that time, and also it recognizes that we can't identify every single type of short-term use. And then this finding also identifies that we have applied our interpretation of the ordinance to short-term vacation rentals, both within the city's coastal zone and within our inland zone. We apply them even-handedly. When the Title 28 was added, it added the vacation rental, and then when we adopted the Inzo, we kept the same definition that we had in Title 28. Next slide, please. This is just, again, clarifying language. Next slide, please. A next slide? Thank you. This finding and determination just recognizes that throughout the city departments, community development, City Attorney's Office, and also the City Council, that we've consistently administered the hotel ordinance in residential zones, but have allowed short-term vacation rentals to go forward in zones permitted for hotels. Next slide, please. There has been some argument that the platform and way in which a short-term rental is booked should have some bearing on its exclusion from the definition of hotel use. However, as our ordinance focuses on, it's not the platform from which you rent your unit, it's the time period under which the letting of the property is done. And so this finding simply identifies that there has been, with the internet, a proliferation of short-term vacation rentals through platforms such as Airbnb and VRBO. Next slide, please. I wanted to take a minute with this slide because this was not a finding that was in the ordinance that was presented to the City Council. However, it is a finding that they added at the time they adopted the interim urgency ordinance, and it was the result of a concern from Council Member Jordan regarding the fact that during certain periods, the city has collected transient occupancy tax, or TOTs, from short-term vacation rental operators who were voluntarily submitting the payment to the city. The city wasn't looking to see at that time, as it collected the TOTs, whether the operation was in a zone that permitted short-term vacation rentals. It was simply accepting the tax. And so while the acceptance of the tax can't legalize an operation in a zone that it's not permitted for, it, council recognized that there may have been some confusion among property owners that if they were submitting tax and the city was collecting it, that the operation that they had was approved. Next slide, please. And this is just, again, to identify that we're not making a policy change. We're simply clarifying our existing law and with the purpose being to prevent litigation, forestall trials, and then any future litigation that might come up, and what we could deal with more expeditiously. Next slide, please. Again, another finding to protect the status quo regarding the prohibition of short-term rentals. Thank you. And this slide and this finding is important because we're not changing or amending Title 28 with respect to the definition of hotel uses. We're amending Title 30, our inland zoning ordinance, and leaving Title 28, which would require the Coastal Commission approval. And the way we are reading it is the both ordinances, 28 and 30, had the same definition and were being applied and interpreted exactly the same way since 1983. So really, with the change in Title 30, it's intended to read consistently also with Title 28. So if there's any ambiguity asserted in 28, we can look to 30 as just the clarifying language. Next slide. So this is the actual amendment, and the language, you can see, it's very minimal. The language that we've added is the underlined language to include this use classification includes but is not limited to auto courts, bed and breakfast inns, hostels, inns, motels, motor lodges, timeshare projects, and then adding short-term rental or similar use of single- or multi-unit residential dwellings. We've removed the does-not-include language simply because it's unnecessary, and this makes for a more streamlined and easier reading. Thank you. So in summary, we are not changing policy. We're simply clarifying existing interpretation and policy by the way of these minor text amendments. So we are recommending that the Planning Commission forward this draft ordinance amending Santa Barbara Municipal Code, section 30.295.040P, to specifically add, quote, "short-term rentals or similar uses of single- or multi-unit residential dwellings," end quote, to the definition of hotels and similar uses, to the City Council with a recommendation for adoption. And I just want to make a quick point. There's a slight change in this recommendation than the one that's found in your staff report, and that is the recommendation that we be forwarded to City Council. What's in your staff report is a recommendation to forward to the ordinance committee. Our office has considered this and determined that the amendment is actually ministerial in nature and therefore does not need to go to the ordinance committee. It is simply clarifying existing policy. It's not changing policy, and it is also moving forward an ordinance that the City Council has already adopted itself. It's making a temporary ordinance, a permanent ordinance. So with that, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you, Ms. Ostringer. I'd like to ask staff if we have any members of the public ready to comment on this item before we come back to the commission.
Madam Chair, this is Ellen Kokinda. Again, we thank you, Timmy, for putting the how-to comment. If anyone has any comments, please raise your hand, using the hand icon. At this time, I do not see anyone who's raised their hand, so I will hand it back over to you. I do think staff received some written public comment, though.
Okay, very good. And again, because we're all in a learning mode with the go-to webinar technology, if any members of the public do come online and raise their hand, Ms. Kokinda, let me know, because I think I'll be flexible and come back to that.
Absolutely.
So, okay, thank you. So with that, Mr. Bus, did you want to say anything before I go to Commissioner Higgins for questions?
Yes, thank you, Chair Schwartz. I just wanted to note for the record that we received two letters on this item, one from Allied Neighborhood Associations in support of the ordinance amendment, and an email from Steve and Cecilia Fort, supporting any and all efforts to continue to ban short-term rentals in single-family residential zones.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Higgins, you're up with questions, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess the way the staff report is presented, it starts off and it's a colorful staff report. I appreciate that. But it starts off and I suppose it starts off with our, you know, our orientation on this has to do with lawsuits. And I suppose everything we do at the planning commissioner everywhere else for that matter has to do with lawsuits. But it is a little unusual, given that we we hacked through this issue fairly, I guess substantially with the end of the O. And we had a orientation to that point that, you know, and a lot of eyes on this particular issue that nothing was going to change at that time. So I'm a little bit uncomfortable with the procedure and what's changed since then. Maybe you can give us some background as Ostringer as to, if you can at all. The, the the connection to this procedure and our exposure.
Of course, Chair Schwartz, Commissioner Higgins.
And I'm, I'm, let me, the rest of my question has to do with the rest of my concerns, but you can, you can help me here. As planners, I want to, I want to know what, what's the, you know, quantitative impact as much as I can of what we're doing or economic impact, or if we're talking about a development standard. What's the setback distance or height limit or what is it? So how many properties would this affect from a, from a statistical standpoint? And then what's the real number of properties? Because just because we have a R4 residential apartment or whatever it is, doesn't necessarily mean it's going to be subject or to additional risk, if you will, as you're characterizing it. So and then I have a follow up. And if you don't have the quantitative data, that's okay. But that's where I'm heading with that question.
Okay, thank you. It shouldn't, it shouldn't affect or change the application to any particular property. So I don't know what houses or how many houses that would want to operate short term vacation rentals are not within a zone that's allowed for hotel use. What this is doing is simply clarifying existing interpretation of our law. So we've always, we're applying it the same way with regards to the what's initiated this. There is a particular lawsuit that we're in right now where we attempted to make a summary judgment motion, which is a, a paper motion that asks the judge, based on all the facts, to identify that the plaintiffs, the property owners in this case, we were entitled to a verdict just on the paper. There is some indication that the summary judgment was denied and which means the case will go forward to trial. And there was the reason being for one of the reasons of the denial was that the there was an allegation that there's ambiguity with regards to short term vacation rentals not being hotel uses. So this is simply intended, and the reason it came as urgency is because of where we are in the lawsuit. The council decided to adopt this as an urgency ordinance, making it effective immediately so that we could then bring to the court the fact that we've now amended our policy to clarify our historic practice.
Okay, so I think I'm following you, but let me take exception with the historic practice. Am I misunderstanding you when you say we've been regulating them for 30 years or so? But just because we were collecting taxes on them doesn't necessarily mean what people were doing was legal?
Correct. So we haven't always collected taxes. Apparently at some point we were collecting tax, people were submitting taxes. We weren't looking to see whether they were permitted. The city just took it in. That was why we had that commissioner or excuse me, council member Jordan now had that concern and why the council decided to put that finding in there to indicate that, yes, we recognize we were doing that. Yes, we understand there may have been some confusion, but just because a public entity accepts tax doesn't make that use legal. So we've consistently been enforcing against short term vacation rentals as they are with, and in this case, what it means is the rental of private residences for a period of less than 30 days. So that hasn't changed. This ordinance isn't going to change that. It's just simply saying identifying the fact and forestalling the argument of these plaintiffs that these are not hotel uses. So basically saying the ordinance, if Mr. Bolton could put back for a moment, the slide showing the changes to the ordinance, I'd appreciate that.
While he's doing that, I'll just say I'm having a little trouble understanding the use of the word consistent. And, you know, explainable by the variety of perceptions or practices from different departments. The city as a whole treating these consistently for 30 years. I don't think I can get behind because it was, you know, as the technology took off and the popularity took off, that created a new wave of enforcement that we didn't, you know, obviously didn't have 30 years ago.
Correct. And that's why the, the not limited to language in the definition of hotel use in our ordinance is, it's important because it recognizes that we can't always contemplate what would come in the future. What this ordinance is doing is it's setting a time period. This classification includes establishments that offer accommodations for periods of 30 consecutive calendar days or less. And then attempts to give examples and certainties of what this means, auto courts, bed and breakfasts. But it's, it's clearly not meant to just restrict it to short term vacation rentals. So, but that's generally what's being argued in court is you didn't identify it. It's a different type of rental. But that doesn't change the fact that there's still rentals for less than 30 days. It doesn't matter whether it's a room in a hotel or it's you're an entire house. It's the period of the days of the rental.
Okay, I'll get out of here. One more question, though. Is, it sounds to me like what we're doing is, is clarifying a definition because of the way we've treated in the past and we have this different definition in Title 28. And then maybe a different definition beyond that in the coastal zone, which is being argued or pointed out by the coastal commission in their March 3rd or 4th letter. So it's kind of like a, the approach to me appears to be a leapfrog. And then, then we're going to classify it as a ministerial change because it's one way over here. So we should make it the same way over here, but doing it ministerially. When we've, you know, when it's formatted for us as a text amendment to the zoning ordinance is a little troubling. I know these are like eight different questions and one question, but tell me if you could, or tell us if you could about the connection to the coastal zoning ordinance and that sort of, my word, leapfrogging. And then the, the interpretation by coastal commission that that is sort of, you know, they've sort of undermined that initial or foundational assumption.
So obviously, I think you're referring to coastal commission's March 9th letter that has a different interpretation and is indicating that the city hasn't historically prohibited short term vacation rentals in residential zones. That's a difference of opinion, clearly. We, we have as city staff at the city attorney's office, the community development department. We've consistently prohibited short term vacation rentals within the coastal zone in residential areas or areas where they're not allowed, or hotels are not allowed. It, we're just with Title 30, we're amending it and indicating because we're just intending to clarify existing language, you can infer that the Title 28 will be consistent with Title 30.
Okay, let me chew on that. I'll let my other commissioners jump in.
Thank you, Commissioner Higgins. I'd like to go to Commissioner Wiskom at this time. Questions?
Thank you, Madam Chair. My question is kind of similar to Commissioner Higgins' question. The staff report on page two at the bottom talks about Title 28 and Title 30 should be consistent with each other. And the definition applies equally in the coastal zone. Commissioner Higgins alluded to the coastal commission letter sent to the mayor and the council members in March. And Ms. Ostringer, you stated that the Title 30 amendment is the clarifying language for Title 28. And I'm, I'm trying to understand if there really is a legal basis to make what Commissioner Higgins called the leapfrog from Title 30 back to Title 28, which is the coastal zone regulation.
So it does. So we're not trying to leapfrog. I think I probably didn't explain. So we, when we're making this amendment to Title 30, we're not making it to say we're making a change. We're just making it to, to clear up what some have argued has been ambiguous and which the city attorney 's office says is pretty much a baseless argument, but why not fix it if we can? So because we've always applied and considered short term vacation rentals in residential zones to be illegal and a, as defined as a hotel use, just the fact that we're changing Title 30 doesn't mean that that same definition and that same interpretation is otherwise now incorrect in Title 28. They're still consistent with each other. The, it's just simply that the language in 30 is now slightly different.
Has, so you're saying that the language in 30, since the definitions were the same, now the language in 30, should this amendment go through, will clarify the language in 28? And I'm, I'm just asking, is there a legal basis for that? Because Title 28 will require a coastal commission approval for even, even this kind of a change, from what I understand. Is that correct?
Yes. And so what, and hopefully we'll eventually Title 30 will get certified and we won't need Title 28. But as we were running through the findings, that was one of the reasons the findings often mention that we've applied these, the same interpretation in both Title 28 and Title 30. And even before we had a Title 30, that was our, our considered interpretation. So it's merely saying we're not trying to make them now inconsistent. We intend them to be still read consistently despite the change to this Title 30.
Okay, so it sounds to me that the, the key words, the key word here in bringing this forward to us for a recommendation is a clarification. And, and that's really all it is, is it's a clarification of of a definition in Title 30 that gives you a roadmap, I guess, to Title 28 when, when we get there. But is that fair assumption?
That's a fair summary, yes.
Okay.
That was the point. We're not changing policy. We're not intending to rope in more houses than we're, it's just a clarification of existing law and our existing interpretation. We're going to continue to interpret and enforce these sections the same way we always have.
Okay, so and, and my understanding is Title 28 and Title 30. Well, before Title, okay, Title 28 and then Title 30, when it came through, both had the same language. So now you're just clarifying it in, in 30, but they both had the same definition before you came before council with the change.
Correct. And they were both interpreted and enforced in the same manner.
Okay.
We'll continue to do that.
Yeah, but Title 28 has a different procedure for actually making the change official.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Chair and Ms. Ostringer. You've answered my questions.
Thank you, Commissioner Wiskom. Commissioner Lodge, any questions for Ms. Ostringer?
No, I don't have questions.
Okay, thank you very much, Commissioner Lodge. I'd like to go to Commissioner Reed next.
Yes, thanks, Madam Chair. Ms. Ostringer, I'm also going to drill down on the same topics of conversation. I generally don't have, this is a first a comment, generally don't have as much of a, as many questions with the Title 30. Where I, where I'm struggling is in the draft ordinance, section one, letter I.
Commissioner Reed, Commissioner Reed, if we could ask Mr. Bolton to put that up on the screen, please. The ordinance document, draft ordinance. We can follow along with your reference as you pose your question. And so that the members of the public can also see the document before us.
Yes. So if this is exclusive to clarifying Title 30, I don't, I, I just see only complicated, further legal complication in including section one I in this ordinance. Because I have, I have not heard any legal clarification to California Coastal Commission's claims. What I see are potentially legitimate claims in their March 3rd letter. Specifically stating that while the city may have applied the definition in Title 30 to Title 28 at some point, the definition that was certified under the coastal commission was in fact different than what we are talking about in Title 30, noticeably different. Which would lend itself to an interpretation that short term rentals would be would be allowed in the coastal zone. So I, I'm just, I would love it if you could speak specifically to that claim by the coastal commission that the definition they have on file is in fact different than what you are stating in municipal code, section 2804, 395. And that which was certified in 1986. And that the definition that they certified, they're stating 28.04, 290. They have, they have no record of an LCP amendment that's changed that definition since. So that's where I'm being hung up. And if you could please speak with specificity, that would be helpful.
Sure. So they are making that allegation that there hasn't been a LCP amendment to change that much older definition. If you look into our ordinances, the, and our current Title 28 that was in existence when the new zoning ordinance, Title 30, was adopted, they read parallel. Whether, I, I can't speak to the claim of why the coastal commission is saying they don't have records of that. I would, we'd have to do some research to look into that claim. And at this point, our ordinance and the ordinance that we've had and been enforcing against for many years in Title 28 is the same similar to what's in Title 30. So what, what I, section I is attempting to say is So what what I section I is attempting to say is we've interpreted these two uh sections and these two titles with respect to definition of hotel use the same way. We intend to continue to interpret them both despite this change to uh the language in Title 30, the same way we always have been, so that they are not going to be read in conflict. Instead, there'll be the interpretation and the enforcement going forward will remain the same.
Okay. Uh, my, uh, I I guess my hesitation here is still in that the what I would see as necessary research to clarify this um this issue between the city and the Coastal Commission. Um, it hasn't been presented. And so at this point, I'm uncomfortable recommending uh section one I to counsel until that can be satisfactory. There can be a satisfactory explanation that that clears it up. Um, because
if I could just, um, we're going to get to very substantive deliberations among ourselves. Um, and for staff, if you could continue on, if I may, continue on with questions to Ms. Osteringer. We're gonna circle back around to all the commissioners for comments before we ultimately uh get to a vote today. So if I could, not to cut you off, you're you're making some very important comments intertwined with questions. I just want to keep us moving. First, an inquiry, and then we'll come back to deliberations.
Okay. So last question. In for hotel zones where there are, say, existing operating single-family or multi-unit residential dwellings doing short-term vacation rentals. Um, would would there be a legal non-conforming component in this that would allow those properties to continue to operate um without complying to commercial standards? Or would they not receive a legal legal non-conforming status and have to change their use and comply with all applicable codes?
If it wasn't permitted, they would need to comply with the codes and become uh permitted as a permitted use.
As a hotel?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, that's all my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Reed. I'd like to next go to Commissioner Bonderson with any questions?
Yes, hi. Good afternoon, Chair Schwartz, and hello, uh, Ms. Osteringer. It's nice to see you both. Um, I have a few questions. Um, I'm hoping more than anything to get clarification on on kind of an umbrella uh issue when I ask these questions. I'm looking at this entire topic more as a big picture um conversation, and I've done quite a bit of research on my own to understand the city process. I wanted to first confirm if it's okay with Ms. Osteringer that I got this right. Um, I have been informed directly in the past um from the Coastal Commission on this issue um when I was looking for information, and it was it was delivered to me. I'd like to read this statement, and I'd like you to please just confirm if it if it applies. Because if it does, then I can go ahead and um use it as my basis for the following question. Um, development in the city of Santa Barbara's coastal zone is regulated through the city's local coastal program, the LCP, which was certified by the commission, the Coastal Commission, as consistent with the Coastal Act in nineteen eighty six. The LCP is divided into two parts, the Land Use Plan, LUP, and the Local Implementation Plan, the LIP. The LUP contains overall guiding principles for regulating development, while the LIP contains more specific details about development standards. Over time, as the city passes ordinances in the in the coastal zone, both the LUP and the LIP are amended to address changing planning priorities, development needs, and land use patterns, et cetera. To update the LCP, city staff draft amendments, which are then certified by the commission before they can officially go into effect, um, would, this would be one of those moments, correct? This this amendment is is following that exact suit that allows us to uh draft and discuss amendments, and then it will then go to the coastal zone. Is that correct? I'm sorry, excuse me, to the Coastal Commission? Is that process, the same process that we are using for this specific um uh topic today?
It no, because we're not amending Title 28. We're only amending Title 30.
So that's that leads
So
my next question, because my question specifically having to do with this is why aren't we addressing Title 28?
It because there's a lot of things we need to do. We we want to get rather than necessarily amend um Title 28, we want to get Title 30 certified by the Coastal Commission. That's our our goal. It's a longer process. Um, if we were to try and amend Title 28 and go to um the Coastal Commission, this was done through an urgency ordinance uh to make it effective immediately. That's why um we're just moving forward with Title 30 and clarifying that we have historically applied the same interpretation because they were generally the same uh definition to both ordinances. At this time, however, we are only amending Title 30, but we will continue to apply our same interpretation um as short-term vacation rentals being a defined hotel use.
Okay, um, so if we're only looking at one at a time, um, not for this particular hearing today, but generally at the city level. Um, my curiosity is if the definition and the general terms that we are planning on using are going to be equal, generally speaking, as you've mentioned yourself, why aren't we able to work on both of them at the same time, discuss them both together? Is there a specific legal reason that we cannot talk about them and bring them to the table at the same time?
Well, it would if we're going to bring them, it's a somewhat of a different process. So Title 30 has the process that we're going through now, which is um a to the Planning Commission, to the council. The if we're gonna do Title 28 at the same time, say, it's any ordinance. It it just requires, it would take longer. So we would go to the the Coastal Commission and deal with the amendments to Title 28 and kind of hold on 30. Or we would proceed forward with 30 and just let Title 28 come lagging behind. So in this case, maybe uh at some point, council will give the direction to amend twenty eight as well with respect to hotel uses. But right now, because this was an urgent issue and it was necessary because of this pending litigation that we have, we didn't, we don't have time. So we're taking thirty first. And then I don't know if there's any intention or interest to move twenty eight and forward with an amendment to the Coastal Commission.
And so the pending litigation, is it only addressing one of the areas?
It's only addressed. Good question. Very good question. It's only addressing inland.
It's only addressing inland, okay. And with regard to the coastal area that I have uh read up quite a bit about and the litigations, or at least the the complications of that area as well, there's no immediate urgency litigation-wise at this time with the coastal area?
Not the same as with the inland.
And therefore, the question that follows next is, have we already dealt with um the litigation that was completed? Um, I believe it was Crackey versus the city um in May of two thousand nineteen. Was that was in the coastal zone as a a part of that was in the coastal zone. It it addressed um short-term rentals in the coastal zone. Has that been addressed in some other format, or is that just bundled into this?
It is not bundled into this as far. Well, I I shouldn't speak to that. It's that case is is done now. Um, whether there's an appeal or not, um, it's based on the facts and the record that existed at the time the the case went forward. So it that's there's not that same necessarily urgency that we're seeing with this pending case that we have.
However, uh, my understanding of that is that the way that the city is handling it is still the same process where, of course, it's not issuing business licenses to run those short-term rentals. And everything's been halted in our community as a whole, both inland and coastal. And we've touched on the COTs and how people are perhaps running them illegally and paying their taxes, which is not a legal way of conducting business. My my disconnect here is the definition that we're putting through that we're discussing today and 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 such. Is it solely to amend or add this definition of hotels to clarify how short-term rentals fit within the single zone of of hotel? Like a single, a short-term rental can actually exist legally legally um conduct business if it sits in a hotel zone?
If they go through the permitting process, yes.
And therefore, if that is, I mean, there are hotels in residential with with residential zones overlapping. There's there's homes, private homes around hotels.
Right, those are particular zones that allow hotels. So in those areas, um, we do probably, I know we do have some permitted short-term vacation rentals.
And and this, the issue that we're discussing today, therefore, amends the definition within that zone only.
Within Title 30 inland.
Within Title 30, within the hotel zone.
It's not a no, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt you. It's not. I it's I guess I wouldn't say it's not uh amending the zones. It's amending the definition of hotels to include specifically identify, call out, if you will, short-term vacation rentals. So we're not changing zones. We're just saying, to add to that, not in limited to, we just added short-term rentals to motor courts and other uh possible uses that could occur thirty consecutive days or less.
I'm glad that you explained that. I it is the same as I understood it, but I appreciate the 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 confirmation that I understood it correctly. So the the next question I wanted to ask now that I have a that overview that I was wishing for. Um, I wanted to address the uh part of your presentation. Because I understand, and in fact, I understand and I agree that the original nineteen eighty three municipal code was written um at a time where things were very different. Our community was different, the way we behaved within our community and the use of internet and so on was certainly different. So no one could have or would have known how the city and the world around us would have changed. And I'm actually very curious about this, how this applies to the current updates and the way we're dealing with the ordinances, because um, one of the things that you had said was that we're amending our policy to clarify our historical practice. And I think that there's a lot of maybe uh discussion revolving around the idea that the historical practice is perhaps out of date. And I was, I wanted to know how the city as a whole is, I mean, leadership within the city. How are we working to take into consideration those changes to serve the community and our economic needs with today's day and time? Has that been part of the overall discussion? And if so, can you, can you talk on that for a moment?
Uh, Chair Schwartz, Commissioner Bonderson, of course, yeah, I mean, it we certainly have changed since nineteen eighty three, and now we're changing with this pandemic and how we are communicating with each other. Um, the the city council has uh has taken this issue up a couple of times. I think um Chair Schwartz will even mention the Planning Commission has taken this up. Um, the the last direction that we received was to uh by the council was to continue with our status quo of and not changing the ordinance prior to this urgency ordinance and in force on um short-term vacation rentals that are operating illegally, um, unpermitted or in zones where they're not allowed. Uh, I clearly, I think from watching the city council, there was interest in uh in taking this up. There there has always been interest, I think, in taking this up. And there's two sides to every story. There's the property owners that have a need to or a desire to get income to help with mortgages or whatnot, finances to to rent their their homes or their extra homes. And then there's the the other side and the other argument of it that, you know, well, nowhere we the advocates of preserving uh housing stock in a housing crisis. So I I think there's always that discussion. Um, from a staffing level, we on on policy, we take direction from the council. And I think it's it's been a struggle for for everyone, for advocates, for city council, for planning commission, to to try and meet everyone's needs. So I I don't see this going away as a a discussion while this is um, this isn't changing policy, this amendment, and it's just clarifying what we've existing policy and our historical interpretation has been. I think it it's stirring up that interest again.
It sounds to me as as it just continues to be a very complex issue. Thank you, Ms. Osteringer. I have one final question. I hope that it will remain a single-part question. Um, from looking at other current um immediate issues within our state and our community, such as the, um, for example, um, the accessory dwelling unit mandate um implemented by the state that took effect on January first, two thousand and twenty, where they the uh the state basically made ADUs much easier, the the permitting process and so on, much more straightforward, which is very different than our current um our current ordinances and models um within each jurisdiction, of course. I'm, uh, it forces us in every jurisdiction to come very quickly uh to terms with the fact that this is changing so so fast. And in an effort to keep up and draft ordinances that meet the guidelines that we want personally uh to fit our our local community and and such, because every community we know is different. Santa Barbara is extremely unique. Um, and each different jurisdiction, it wants to maintain those types of values. Um, and we can't we can't make it, uh, we can't, we can't conflict with the state mandate. We can only add guidelines that make um unique issues um approachable within our community to to handle those those types of unique conditions. Um, I'm very, very curious to understand while we are in this transitional period of figuring out Title 30, Title 28, understanding how and if there's any flexibility and possibility to have short-term rentals in our community, is there a way in a in in tandem with this issue that's on our table today? Is there an opportunity to create temporary guidelines that fit our community, that meet the state and the Coastal Commission requirements? That can go hand in hand as we transition and update the definition? We're also providing guidelines to our community members on how and where and 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 theoretically, how we can uh support them until those ordinances are completed and adopted and begin to be enforced with um documentation behind them? Is there any, is there any way in our system now that we can recommend and uphold that kind of a additional uh temporary guideline?
Chair Schwartz, Commissioner Commissioner Bonderson, that's a a good question. Uh, I know there are other communities um that have allowed vacation rentals, and it's a a good, important source of their transient occupancy and it's a good, important source of their transient occupancy tax. And they do have guidelines. But those, their ordinances are more robust in general with regards to short-term vacation rentals and what can and can't be done. Right now, if they are permitted uses, it's there, you can have, if they're creating a nuisance, a public nuisance, then our office can, can regulate it. Generally, they're private nuisances. And so it's up to the neighbors to, to enforce that nuisance activity or stop that nuisance activity through a private litigation. If the council decides to go forward or decides that they want to have short-term rentals in some way, then I, I think we should have guidelines and best practices.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Bonderson. Oh, I see, yes, Ms. Brooke is with us. Did you want to step in before we move to Commissioner Escobedo for questions?
I would, thank you, thank you, Chair Schwartz. I just want to clarify because I, I often hear maybe confusion or misunderstanding about whether or not short-term rentals are allowed in the city at this point in time. And they are, so um, they are hotel use, so they can be proposed for conversion or new development in any zone that allows hotels, so long as they meet all the development standards that apply to hotels. And we do have several properties who have gone through that conversion process over the last several years. So it has occurred and we do have handouts and we meet with people and talk to them about the process. They would need to go through the development standards they need to meet in order to convert their home or in some cases of a couple of homes on a property to short-term rental use or hotel use. So they are allowed. It's often confused in the media or just overhearing conversations among friends. There's this outright ban of short-term rentals in the city and that's not the case. I just want to make sure that we're clear on that.
Thank you, Ms. Brooke. I'd like to, if that's your, if those are your concluding questions, Commissioner Bonderson, I'd like to go to Commissioner Escobedo now for questions, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and hello, Ms. Osteringer. So many of my fellow commissioners asked many of the questions I was going to ask, but one that comes to mind is, is there, because I can't imagine that we're the only community that is dealing with some variation of this. Do you know of any case law, even if it's non-binding, that has defined short-term vacation rentals as hotels?
Off the top of my head, no.
So, and as Ms. Brooke just mentioned, we have short-term vacation rentals operating in the city. But are they operating in the same manner that we think of as short-term vacation rentals? When we think of an Airbnb or are they operating more like a conventional hotel?
The ones that I'm aware of are operating like an Airbnb.
So they don't have onsite. So when I think of a hotel, there's an onsite manager that is, if there are rowdy patrons staying there, they, they're kind of enforcing some of that. It's, it's mostly going to be, I guess, noise complaints from neighbors.
Right, there may be some that have someone staying onsite, but it's, it's not a requirement. The, the ones I'm aware of, at least one I'm, I'm thinking of, it, it doesn't have someone onsite. They have people that come in just like you would, you expect with the Airbnbs or the RBOs. You know, they have a cleaning company that comes in and a manager that, you know, allows somehow the access to the property. But it's, no, there, there may be some operating with a permanent resident onsite, but it's not required.
Okay. And the reason I ask is, when I think about how a conventional hotel operates and then you compare that to a short-term vacation rental, they can be, they're very different in how they operate and especially with that onsite supervision. Have we thought about going into and maybe looking into a short-term vacation rental specific ordinance? Because it operates so differently?
Yeah, so council took that up, I, I think it was a year or two ago. Chair Schwartz may have a better recollection of the time, or Ms. Brooke. And just to be clear, and that was something that they considered was allowing them, if there was a permanent resident onsite, the owner was onsite, to minimize the nuisance activity. Ultimately, they didn't, didn't go forward with that. Ms. Brooke?
Right, correct. It was in 2016 when we were, as staff, had been receiving more complaints about nuisance-type activity related to short-term rentals. And at the same time, there was a large contingent in the community who wanted to relax the standards to have short-term rentals in other zones. And so we had a couple of public hearings at the council, bringing forward to them different options. One was a home sharing ordinance, another was sort of a hybrid. We were open to whatever council directed us to do, although we were honest in saying it's difficult to enforce any of these rules because they are nuisance-related oftentimes. At the time though, as Ms. Osteringer said, council did not direct staff to work any further on that and instead asked us to enhance our enforcement efforts on the nuisance-type short-term rentals that were occurring in the city at that time. So if we were directed by council to amend our ordinances to better reflect how short-term rentals operate, we could, but we haven't been directed to do that yet.
And Commissioner Escobedo, if I could also comment on behalf of the planning commission, since yes, I was involved with those hearings. There were mixed opinions among the planning commissioners at that time as to whether or not to recommend to council to consider forming or forging one or, or a combination of new ordinances, short-term rentals, home share, et cetera, as Ms. Brooke alluded to. But then you know the outcome of the council at that time.
Thank you for that clarification. And I'm, and I'm wondering if there is, this might be for Ms. Brooke again. If we have seen positive outcomes from our increased enforcement or if we just continue to see kind of same old, same old, even with kind of investing more resources in enforcement?
We were seeing more compliance. We've, in the last eight or 12 months, have changed the enforcement tactic and we rely more now on the assistance from the city attorney's office. When zoning enforcement staff was taking the lead in enforcement, we would do our best to gather evidence that was provided to us or what we could gather on our own to try to prove that the residence was actually being used as a short-term rental. Wasn't always that easy to prove. But since working with the city attorney's office more recently, we're getting really good compliance and in working with operators of these and signing agreements, understanding that they shouldn't be operating these short-term rentals going forward and there would be more expedient and significant consequences as a result of that. We were finding that our administrative, administrative citation fines of $100, $200 or so is not enough. So with the attorney's help, we've been able to take a stronger tactic with that. So, and we are receiving less complaints, nuisance-based complaints, which is good.
That's good. Thank you for, for that. So I guess I'll save that for my comments. I too, to go back to Commissioner Reed's comments, I too share some concerns about getting clarification from the accusation that the coastal commission made in their letter. Because it, it is a somewhat serious one. And I guess my question for you is, assuming that, let's say, they are correct in their thought from the letter that what was approved in Title 28 matches their description or their definition rather than ours, does that open us up to possible exposure between the city and the coastal commission?
Chair Schwartz, Commissioner Escobedo, I wouldn't say necessarily litigation exposure. Obviously, if, if it turns out that their interpretation is different than ours, we'd work with them or will work with them to, to become compliant or to get our ordinance certified or do what we need to do to make our ordinance compliant.
And would, would that, that same strategy be used if, let's say, our research comes to a different conclusion than their research on what the definition is?
Yes, certainly. If we were to do research and we had a different conclusion or different file work, we would certainly share that with them.
And then, excuse me while I look through my notes. So is this text amendment? And I, I know we've kind of, it's been broadened up by other commissioners, but I just want to get clarification. Is this text amendment also providing clarification for Title 28?
So it is, it is not an, an amending Title 28 in any way. We are only amending Title 30. What we're merely saying is we've consistently applied them both the same way. We're going, 30 is being changed. We're not changing Title 28, but that's not changing how we've always interpreted and enforced our ordinance in 28. We're just saying, we think they read consistently together. Even though there might be this specific, even though we specifically added this, the short-term vacation rental identification in the language of the not limited to. We think that it still applies in 28 and it always has been applied that way in 28. But to be clear, we are not amending Title 28.
Correct. And I, would I be correct in, in saying that the clarification that I get from Title 20 or from Title 30 would assist my understanding of Title 28? In terms of the definition of a hotel?
Yes.
Okay. I believe that those are all of my questions. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Escobedo. I'm going to ask my questions now, some of them have been addressed by my colleagues. Ms. Osteringer, you mentioned that what's before us, staff proposal is not a policy change. And yet, there's some very pointed and specific assertions being made by the coastal commission in their March 3rd letter. And so without going into great detail regarding their assertions, we could certainly spend time point by point of, on their assertions in this letter. I would just like to understand why, if I heard you correctly, that staff since March 3rd has not contacted the coastal commission specifically Deputy Director Steve Hudson, who signed the letter. Because there are some very clear tensions and disagreements between the commission and our city as things stand today. Could you comment on that?
I couldn't say if he has or has not been contacted by city staff, the coastal commission. And with regards to this ordinance, we're merely changing title, we're changing Title 30. There's reference to Title 28 because we've always applied them consistently. So we're just focusing on Title 30 right now and, and changing that. So I
Is that it? Were you, are you, are you muted or no? You concluded your sentence.
Yeah, the, the question with regards to the policy is, it's not a policy change because we're only changing Title 30. And we haven't, we're not changing any interpretation of how we have enforced our ordinance. This is how we've believed, have historically been interpreting it. We're just adding some new words.
Okay, let me, let me reframe my question to see if I can ask it differently for perhaps, you know, further, further comment or further response. When the commission states that they believe our assumptions on any matter, but this matter right now, are incorrect, which is what's in the second paragraph of the first page. They go on from there identifying what they consider to be troubling or that there's not been an LCP amendment that changed the definition, et cetera. If we have any either miscommunication, misunderstanding or disagreements between March 3rd and today, certainly, I would have strongly encouraged and would have hoped that we would have taken this up with the coastal commission so that this isn't a lingering set of issues as the lawsuit unfolds to ultimate adjudication and whatever the council's going to do following our hearing today. So I really would like to know from staff, and if not you, perhaps Ms. Brooke could help.
I think we may.
It looks like we
We understand why there hasn't been a conference call and some written communication.
Chair Schwartz, I apologize, you cut out. We lost audio and, and
Oh, okay. Did you hear, did you hear the, it, it shows I'm still on, on my computer. Are we, are we okay?
Now, now we can hear you.
Ms. Kenda, do we have audio?
Yes, it just, it was, I think
I'm not sure where I left off.
Yeah, so I think you were requesting staff's, if staff could comment, but we couldn't really understand what you wanted them to comment on. So if you could repeat that, please.
Okay, well, to me, I was asking why, I was asking for reasoning. If, if in fact no communication has currently in writing, that's really what I would want to see, is ultimately some written correspondence subsequent to March 3rd between our city staff or city attorney's office and Deputy Director Hudson of the coastal commission on the numerous assertions being made and commentary, some very pointed in this letter. To just, anyway, I'll stop there, whether Ms. Brooke or Ms. Osteringer could comment. Very clearly, number one, has subsequent communication occurred between city staff and the coastal commission following March 3rd? And if not, why not?
So I, I can't comment as to whether that has happened. I will say with regards to this particular ordinance amendment, it's strictly limited to Title 30.
Ms. Brooke, did you want, did you want to, was there something you could respond with? No?
I, I think in terms of a relevant answer, Ms. Osteringer addressed that. I can just say, in terms of my office, why the planning division has not engaged in subsequent conversations in response to that letter is just honestly priorities and other things that our division has been focused on at the time.
Okay, okay. You know, we have a long history, of course, with, with the coastal commission and where we may not always agree. My question, the, the underpinning of my question is not to whether or not we agree on any of these assertions made by the commission or analysis. It's when we don't respond at all to fairly substantive communication and pretty direct communication from the commission. I'm concerned about this kind of letter, this kind of communication sitting on a shelf and what could be perceived by the commission as tantamount to ignoring it. And to me, that would be a dangerous perception to foster with the commission. So I'm going to set that aside for a moment, but wanted to express that to you. Now, my next question then, Ms. Osteringer, is I'm trying to reconcile some information from various sources here in terms of what's before us today. We've had a number of years of worth of opportunities going back really to the new zoning ordinance, which we worked on between 2014 and 2017 to clarify, amend, even create a new, new ordinances to address the issue of both hotels and short-term rentals. In fact, since I was serving on the commission during the Enzo hearings, a number of us specifically asked Planner Danny Cotto if we could please take up this very topic. To no avail. Okay, now let's go forward. To no avail. Okay, now let's go forward. Local coastal plan update. A number of us were on that subcommittee, myself included. A number of us asked if we could please take up this issue as a part of what would ultimately go to the Coastal Commission for certification. That did not occur. So here we are, 2020. And I'm finding it very disconcerting that first an emergency ordinance went to council and now we're being asked to allegedly not make a policy change, but make a text amendment. When there have been many years worth of opportunities in in the framework of major policy work programs. And so I'm still left not clear, quite frankly, about the rationale outside of this somehow being a tool, and I'm going to be very direct with you, Ms. Osteringer, outside of a municipal code change possibly being used as a tool, and it's a potential tool. It's not a guaranteed tool advantageous tool in the course of legal adjudication. Do you have any thoughts for me about that? Uh, I I just, again, I'm finding it disconcerting and I I don't know how to make my way through. Where I don't connect the dots and I have concern about precedent setting in in what we're being asked to do here today.
Yes, Chair Schwartz. So with regards to why short term vacation rentals haven't been taken up specifically with regards to policy and whether we permit them or we don't. Um, I think it has. I mean, we take that direction from council with regards. Uh, if council wants to take it up, they give us that direction and and we start that process. At the time, we were doing the new zoning ordinance. There, we couldn't, we didn't have the direction or the desire at that time. To really go forward without council policy telling us to create a short term vacation rental. There was no need at that time with the new zoning ordinance, as far as we knew, to add or change and add short term vacation rentals because they are rentals for 30 consecutive days or less. So there was really, what we believed, no need to to change it. We've now been engaged in lawsuits and where they're raising that the the language and definition of hotel uses ambiguous. We're starting, it's not ambiguous, however, and it's quite clear because it's rentals for 30 consecutive days or less. However, if you're going to make that argument in court, fine, we'll just add them to this language. So we're not changing our practice, but if it's gonna make you happy, we'll just add it in there.
Okay, um, let me go to my next question. If I could ask staff to put up page two of the staff report. I want to go to the very last paragraph. And I want to ask you about the very last sentence in that last paragraph. And the staff has, if Mr. Bolton has access to the staff report.
Would you would you like me to read it while we?
Well, I can I can read it. I'd like I'd like it expanded on the screen. The the paragraph starts, yes, while only Title 30. There we are, Mr. Bolton, if you would. Go up a bit. This is paid the bottom of page two. There we are. So that last paragraph, if you could please expand that. So this is the last sentence I want to ask you about. The permanent ordinance amendment that is being proposed similarly only amends Title 30, but makes the finding that the definition is intended to apply equally within the coastal zone. So which is it? Are we amending both? Uh, the coastal zone requires Coastal Commission approval. We haven't sought that. We don't have that. And it's basically, I want to ask you, doesn't this, maybe a rhetorical question, Ms. Osteringer, but it seems to me that the the proposal, if it moves forward, would de facto amend Title 28. So I kind of feel like we can't have it both ways and this sentence is leading me in that direction. And if I could connect this sentence while asking you your for your comment. When I went to our new zoning ordinance page on the city website today in Planning Central, there's an italicized sentence close to the top. Applicability within the coastal zone will follow certification by the California Coastal Commission. Tentatively expected 2018, early 2019. I feel we have a patchwork of ordinances with or without Coastal Commission approval, with or without consistent definitions. And I don't know how all of this synchronizes. So back to that last sentence, the permanent ordinance. Could you please comment on that? Because um, this sentence and its implications are problematic for me, if you would.
Of course, Chair Schwartz. So as I was saying, it's intended to recognize the fact that the two ordinances have been enforced 28 and 30, enforced and interpreted in the same exact manner. The fact that we're adding the language to Title 30 doesn't mean that we're changing the interpretation or and historical practice that we've had with Title 28. It's simply saying this applies to 30 because it's the same definition that we've always used and the same historical interpretation. It it just applies to 28. There's, we're not saying that we're adding short term, but that specific short term rental or similar use single language to 28. We're merely saying the same interpretation applies whether it's you add that language or you don't.
But how can we say, I'm sorry to have to drill down on this, how can we say, we say how staffs is in this sentence? Makes the finding that the definition is intended. How can we say anything is intended to apply equally in the coastal zone when we haven't pursued that? We haven't gotten the language in our ordinance and in the LCP and approved by the Coastal Commission? So I don't know. This is troubling for me, if you can, as you can tell.
I think I think we can, I think we can say that because what we're saying is the same, it's the same definition. Yeah, it's just adding languages. It's it's still focuses on the the term of the period of the rental as the key. The fact that we're adding short term rental or similar use language isn't going to change how we we have historically interpreted Title 28 and how we interpret it today and how we're going to interpret it uh, after this permanent ordinance is passed. We're still going to interpret that hotel, uh, short term vacation rentals are hotel uses as defined in Title 28.
So I want to come back to a theme here in another question. And Commissioners Whiskam and Reed could hold on, please, while I finish my questioning and then we'll start with deliberations. If I don't know if this is revisionist on your part, kind of going back as though you had a crystal ball. Outside of a lawsuit and in light of the fact that our commission in particular sincerely wanted to and asked for a taking up of all of this, the whole package, short term rentals, home share, hotel definitions over a number of years and only now there seems to be a a alleged pressing need to further define hotels. So do you have a comment, any reply as to outside of a lawsuit? Why now? Has anything changed on the ground? I mean, short term rentals have plummeted because of a ban in most of the city and we've lost over $800,000 in revenue every year because we can't collect that from STRs, et cetera. So what what are the bottom line facts to be considered here?
The driving, uh, the driver behind this ordinance and the clarifying language of our historic practices, the lawsuits.
Yeah.
The recent lawsuit that we're.
I'm sorry.
It's the recent lawsuit that we're in.
Okay, um, so I'd like to come back to the Commissioners now. I think Commissioner Reed, I don't know if you were first on the screen of would you like or Commissioner Whiskam, were you first on for comments?
Yeah, I just have one more, one more question, if I may, before we actually get to comments. And it relates to what Commissioner Reed and what the theme of this has, it seems to be. I view this as a clarification of an ordinance. And if you, the the, I think the troubling section is is what Commissioner Reed cited, which is I in the ordinance. And I'm wondering, uh, Ms., I'm looking for your comment on this, Ms. Osteringer. If we really change this in section I. The City Council further finds, determines and declares that interpretation of the definition of and restriction on the location of hotels under Title 28, which previously applied citywide, but which now applies only in the coastal zone. And the interpretation of the definition and restriction on location of hotels under Titles 30, which now implies inland of the coastal zone are intended to be consistent with one another. And we just strike the shall be, shall be read to be consistent with one another. So in other words, Ms. Osteringer, can you comment on that if 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 it were are intended to be consistent with one another and and not shall be read with one another? That seems to be the common theme in all the Commissioners. Questions are the link between 28 and 30 and the fact that 28. So we've we, I, my question is, can we soften that language a little bit under a recommendation?
Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Whiskam. Yes, Ms. Osteringer.
Chair Schwartz, Vice Chair Whiskam, absolutely. Of course, if that's the direction you want to give and forward to to council, we can do that.
Do you do you feel that that does soften it a little bit and not, and and maybe the link isn't quite so direct between Title 28, which is, you know, not at this point not sanctioned by the, or we haven't gone to the Coastal Commission to to update it to Title 30 and and does this soften it a little bit?
Chair Schwartz, Vice Chair Whiskam, I think it certainly goes to to what you've all been getting at and your concerns with regards to the implication that this is somehow de facto amending the Title 28. I think it it reads, I wouldn't say softer is not the language I I would use, but I think it reads consistent that our consistent interpretation of both is the same and not changing.
Non-legalese language.
Thank you, Commissioner Whiskam. Um, before I turn back to Commissioner Reed, I just want to ask the Commissioners, those who have turned their webcams on, are these additional questions or would you, or yes, they are. Okay. And because we can't have all of us on the screen at the same time, Commissioner Bonderson, did you also have follow up questions? Okay, so let me turn to Commissioner Reed, please. Follow up questions?
My follow up question was effectively the same as Vice Chair Whiskam. But I'll just ask again, what, uh, Ms. Osteringer, what was the intention behind inserting that language in in I? Quote, shall be read?
Chair Schwartz and Commissioner Reed. The intent was simply to say if there's where there may have been ambiguity in Title 28. You could look to Title 30 to understand that this was the interpretation that the city has always historically applied to short term rentals, whether it was in the coastal zone or whether it was in the inland zone. It it's just language that says if you have any doubts, this is what we were, we meant. What we've always meant.
So so this, this was not a precedent in response to or an op. Can you hear me?
Uh, you cut out for a little bit. Could you repeat that? Could you repeat that, Commissioner Reed?
Yeah, so just to clarify, the intent of of that language, um, which is very different than what was written in the the staff report on page two that Chair Schwartz had quoted. That that language shall be read with attempts at any sort of precedent in challenging Coastal Commission's assertions, because in Coastal Commission's letter, they specifically cite cases. And it it just, it it just, it just seems like there's posturing going on and I'm nervous about another legal liability.
Chair Schwartz and Commissioner Reed. So section I was drafted before we received the Coastal Commission's letter. That was their response to the inclusion of I. I read that they have a a different definition from of hotel use in Title 28 and that they're alleging that we didn't amend or we didn't seek their approval with to amend the current language that we've had for quite some time. And so I think that maybe it's posturing. But we'll we'll certainly take it up with the Coastal Commission if they have any further problems and I don't, I leave it to Ms. Brooke regarding how she, her staff speaks to that or with the Coastal Commission. With this particular case, we're just amending Title 30.
Okay, that was my only remaining question. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Reed.
That was my last question.
Okay, thank you so much. Commissioner Bonderson, additional follow up questions or questions?
I believe Commissioner Higgins was next. Did you want to go first? Do you?
Commissioner. Uh, yeah, let me turn, let me turn to Commissioner Higgins. Thank you. Commissioner Higgins, follow up questions?
Okay, I don't have a question about the Coastal Commission. So thank you, Ms. Osteringer. You're doing a good job. Guess that if we have Ms. Brooke still available, I have a question to her or to staff. The the net effect of this, and help me here, is that it clarifies that if somebody wants to have an STR in the R4 zone or commercial zone. STBR, sorry. That they can, they would have to convert their their building to a hotel. And we we theoretically have a path for that. Is that the net effect? Because as I understand it, if you, you don't necessarily have to convert your property or your building to a hotel currently, if you want to have an STR, STBR in part of your building. Is that accurate?
Chair Schwartz and Commissioner Higgins, you can convert portions into a hotel. The difference is that hotels are non-residential floor area, and so that's what needs to be permitted through the city.
So sorry about that. Didn't listen to Alan. Okay, so you you can theoretically, the result of this definition change is that if you want to have a short term rental in your R4 zone, you know, under chapter 30, Title 30, you can do that, but you do have to convert your your entirety of your property to a hotel, which which necessitates different development code standards. Is that right?
Chair Schwartz and Commissioner Higgins, this change to the definition does not change in any way where the uses are allowed or how that process works. You could permit just a portion of a building as the non-residential hotel or short term vacation rental portion.
But that portion would be subject to commercial, you know, hotel building codes, et cetera?
It would require being allocated on residential floor area through the Planning Division and then whatever requirements the building and fire departments have.
And that that is not a, that's would be a new procedure as a result of this change to the Title 30 definitions or not?
Chair Schwartz. No. And the ones that we do have that are permitted in the city, they they have gone through the same process.
And I'm gonna come back to, I guess, my my sort of lingering questions about how many properties does this then, you know, cause a difference for? Or what's the, what's at stake here with this process in terms of those properties that are in or legal unconforming or all of the properties in the, in the R4 zone district or what's the number? Who's got that answer? Does anybody?
Chair Schwartz, Commissioner Higgins, it, it's not going to change anything. It, it's the same zone and the same requirements are just going to be applied. We're just simply making clarifying language. So it's hard, I can't give you, it's whoever is in a zone that would allow a hotel use, those are the properties that can be possibly permitted for a short-term vacation rental. They always have been, even before we make this change. Those that are in a non-allowed zones, it's not going to change anything for them either. It's not going to change anything for anyone that's been illegally operating a short-term vacation rental or legally operating a short-term vacation rental. It's, it has no, I guess, net effect beyond saying, clarifying our, how we've historically interpreted and also applied and forced our ordinance.
Offhand, do your staff have an idea of how many applications the department has received to go through this process in the last, say, year or two years?
I don't know. Perhaps Ms. Brook might know? Or Ms. DeBusk?
Commissioner Higgins, I don't have the answer to that, and Ms. Brook has left the meeting. It's a small number overall, is my understanding.
Okay. Those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Higgins. Commissioner Bonderson, follow-up questions?
Thank you very much, Chair Schwartz. I wanted to address two questions that have come up from the previous conversations and questions that other commissioners have made, and I just want to piggyback on those two. The first one is with regard to how the city staff and departments are handling current applications that do come in. I heard when Ms. Brook responded earlier, saying that there are pathways, although my experience, both personally and speaking to other people within our community, is that those pathways aren't very clear and that depending on who we speak with, we potentially get conflicting responses. And so I'm, I'm really curious to understand how the status quo is potentially the best option at this time, since it doesn't seem to be achieving what we need at this moment as a community, because this doesn't seem to be a top priority, as mentioned before. And my, my main curiosity is because the city's current approach is basically to do nothing or keep the status quo. It gives off the, it gives off the, the sense that it allows us to continue not to have, to, we're not, not to be in a position to have to do anything, to have to issue a business license for short-term rentals, which then keeps the original desire to not allow the short-term rentals in the community. However, that goes against the rulings of the lawsuit and enables us, therefore not, as a city, as a community, not to do what the Coastal Commission has mandated and, and that the judges have, have placed in their verdict. So the longer it takes to handle this and to write new ordinances, the, the more time the city has to not allow short-term rentals. I would assume that we have city staff designated to this effort to writing and drafting more complete ordinances to comply with the requirements of the lawsuit, of the verdict and the Coastal Commission mandates. I'm, I'm curious to understand, if this is not considered a priority, does that mean that work has ceased or that it's not being done consistently? Do we have a, a city planning staff in place working on this as an overall, not just a definition, but as an overall ordinance, working towards that goal? And if so, what is the timeline? That, that I, I, reading through the lawsuits, I recognize that the verdict and the conditions of the lawsuit unfortunately did not dictate or designate a timeline. So do we have a personal goal within the city that as people are assigned projects and are working towards things, that there's a deadline or a, or a, or a goal in place? Do, do you know?
Commissioner Bonderson, I'm going to ask Commissioner, to Staff Planner DeBusk to comment on that, if I could.
Thank you very much.
And then we'll continue on. Thank you so much.
Chair Schwartz and Commissioner Bonderson, I will speak really briefly and then let Ms. DeBusk jump in with regards to that. But that is a policy direction that we would need to get from council with regards to creating and drafting ordinances with respect to short-term vacation rentals. And we'd, we'd need that policy direction from them to tell us how they want us to regulate them, where, where they would want them, where they wouldn't want them. Right now, the status quo is to only allow them in zones that allow hotels. So that's the, the policy direction to continue going forward that we've gotten. So I'll let Ms. DeBusk ask if there's some, or answer if there's someone in staff that's drafting it, but I would imagine not. Right now, the direction from council was just to, to have this clarifying language and maintain status quo. Ms. DeBusk?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Osteringer. I will add that is working on some land use plan, amend with the commission related to visitor accommodations. So that's a part of our land use plan that we are continuing work on, but we're not specifically addressing the details at this point. That's, that's a policy document.
Thank you, Ms. DeBusk. If there aren't any other pressing questions, Commissioner Bonderson, I'd like to come back, circle back around by Commissioner to, for us to begin comments. Did you have, are you, are you concluded with your questions?
Perhaps just a straightforward one-liner for Ms. Osteringer from the legal perspective. When a lawsuit such as any of these lawsuits that have come before us at the city, the cracky versus the city, for example, back that concluded in May of 2019, when there is a verdict as such, from a legal standpoint, is there any required timeline to take action? Do we have any restrictions upon us as a deciding, decision-making board or commission to move this along or take action? And if so, why has it taken approximately a year to have our first visit upon this material?
Chair Schwartz and Commissioner Bonderson, there's no set timeframe that the court mandated that we change or even that we change. It was just a matter of how we were applying the law to the short-term rentals. It's a policy decision on the part of council with regards to how they respond to the lawsuits. And so that, there was the cracky, and then we've got a new lawsuit that we're dealing with. And so this was a policy decision by the council to address, address it in the inland area in this particular way.
Thank you very, very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Bonderson. I'd like to come back for, to begin our deliberations. Commissioner Higgins, oh, I'm sorry, I see Commissioner Wiskom on. And if I could just, I want to frame something for us at this point, before you start, Commissioner Wiskom. I want to allow each commissioner, and I will then go after the other six commissioners with comments. I don't want to hear an entertainment of emotion until we've all had our opportu, individual opportunities to comment. So with that, Commissioner Wiskom, comments?
Commissioner Higgins actually was first in the order before, but I didn't see. So why go, you want to go ahead first?
Commissioner Higgins, would you like to jump in now with comments?
Sure. Sorry, same seats. Okay, so I'll be very interested to hear everybody else's comments. I guess at this point, I'm, I can't quite get my comfort level connected with a forward path here because, at least at this point, because of a couple of things. One, just the, the cluster that is this coastal zoning ordinance connection, and I appreciate Commissioner Wiskom's, you know, idea, but I just think that it's unusual. That's, first of all, that's the unusual part about this. Second, the, the fact that we did not explicitly entertain this during the NZO, the fact that we are sort of taking it out of order with NZO cleanup items, the fact that we don't have, you know, some, some good numbers associated with this definition change, who it applies to, how, you know, I, I know staff is saying it doesn't apply to anybody, that if it doesn't, then why are we doing it? And just the, the, you know, unusual nature of, of the planning commission getting sort of brought into the process. I'm not saying we don't deserve to be, but it, but planning items usually have a more comprehensive set of circumstances before we, we render a decision. That being said, I'll talk out of both sides of my mouth. The, the procedure to call this ministerial is also kind of curious in that they go directly to the council first before ordinance committee. I think, you know, what we've done here, we're always very careful about putting things in the record and giving the public notice about what we're doing or why we're doing it or how it's being done. And what's been in the record now or notice is that it's going to come to us, then the ordinance committee then go to the council, and that's, that's being, that's sort of changed in the last minute. That gives me a little pause too, but I do understand the, you know, it's not unusual for a cleanup item to come through in and of itself, but it's just, it's just kind of murky for me at this point.
Thank you, Commissioner Higgins. And if I could, just to help guide us towards ultimately a vote, we are, as stated in the last page of our staff report, under next steps, we're being asked to make a recommendation to council and of any form that we choose. So I don't want us to feel constrained as to how we fashion that recommendation. It's really wide open as to the majority vote by the commission as to what to do and how to do that. If I could also say, before I turn it over to you, Commissioner Wiskom, for comments, I believe that the council, or I should say, the majority of the council members are very eager in watching our hearing today, in understanding our outcome in terms of next steps for them. And I know they respect us as an independent land use-making, a public official body. So I'm very pleased that we're doing the, the deep dive, as some would say today. Commissioner Wiskom, please, your comments?
It's a very, it's a very deep dive. Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I view this differently. I, I struggle with the kind of connection that's going between Title 28 and Title 30. That, that's the big, that was the kind of the big stumbling block for me. But I have to go back to the fact that this is clarifying an existing ordinance. And i, if you look at the summary that we have there, clarify and declare existing and historic interpretation of definition of hotel and other similar uses to include short-term rentals. I believe staff has proved that there is a historic interpretation that, that has linked 28, Title 28 and Title 30, and that, that we need to clarify this for consistency to include short-term rentals for Title 30. I also would not be comfortable in, in Section I, as Commissioner Reed brought up, unless we, unless we, we have stricken from the findings under I and shall be read to be consistent. I, I, I think that section should definitely come out so that it's, it, it becomes are intended to be consistent with each other. Intention is something very different as shall be read to be consistent with, with each other. So because this is a clarification and staff has shown a historic interpretation and also some problems with interpretation, I'm, I'm comfortable moving this forward with that change in Section I. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Commissioner Wiskom. Commissioner Reed, if I could ask you to come back on for your comments, please?
I had to change my headphones. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, it's very clear now.
Okay, great. Oh, was Commissioner, speak for me? Chair Schwartz, was Commissioner Lodge before me?
Commissioner Lodge, I think you just popped up on the screen. Yes, thank you, Commissioner Reed. Commissioner Lodge, comments, please?
Well, I would like to make my comments now, as I, I agree with what Vice Chair Wiskom had to say.
Okay, very good.
Maybe I'm oversimplifying things, but I see an ambiguity in the existing wording, but the law, it's become necessary to add using short-term, well, it has, as has been proposed, to include short-term vacation rentals. And I'm, it's clearly the same thing as the other similar uses that are listed in the existing ordinance, but as clarification, I, I don't have any problem with it whatsoever. We're not changing policy in any way with this change.
Thank you, Commissioner Lodge. Thank you so much. Commissioner Reed, would you please rejoin us here on the screen? Your comments, please?
So generally, I, I, I think I support the clarification, not the modification, of the Title 30 language, and I understand the reason for that. And I'm supportive of that. And I think largely this draft ordinance, Exhibit 1, intends to do just that, and it does it well. What I cannot support, even with a modification, is Section 1I under the draft ordinance. I would strike Section I entirely. That would be my recommendation. antagonizes a governing body in the Coastal Commission, and it's, it's just an unnecessary fight to provoke. And the intent of this is to clarify Title 30. I, I don't think we need to go beyond that at this point in linking it to Title 28. So I, I would like that to be very clear. And, and the best way to do that, while I think it's helpful to remove shall be read, I think I needs to be removed in its entirety. Well, a city responds to the claims of the Coastal Commission, and we have a chance to review that, and at the highest level, council has a chance to review that. Those would be my comments.
Thank you, Commissioner Reed. Let's see, I would like to also hear from Commissioner Escobedo. Are you still with us?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I, I too generally agree with the idea of adding that clarification for Title 30. I'm kind of going back and forth between Commissioner Reed's suggestion or recommendation of striking the entire section versus Vice Chair Wiskom's. And I think I prefer to strike the entire thing, but I could be okay with just keeping it as intended and, and strike shall be read. One other recommendation that I have, I think, going through this and, and having our deliberations is really pointing out the fact that I think we need to, I would like to make the recommendation that city council gives direction to form a short-term vacation rental ordinance. I think that the two have different challenges in regulating them, in particular, short-term vacation rentals. And I think we can address it in a more robust way if we actually take it on as a, a whole, entirely different ordinance on its own. And I think adding it just under the classification of hotel leaves a lot of gray area. And I think And I think in order to make sure that we regulate, oversee it and enforce our policies that. We would need to take on a whole different work effort. So those are my comments.
Okay, thank you very much, Commissioner Escobedo. I'd like to, just to canvas a few commissioners here. First, I want to go back to Commissioner Higgins who came on first. I want to see, now that you've heard some of our colleagues' comments, including Commissioner Escobedo. If you could hold on, Ms. Bonderson, I want to come back to Mr. Higgins. Including Commissioner Escobedo's recommendation to request that council. Initiate work through staff with us on drafting or creating an STVR ordinance. Commissioner Higgins, any thoughts about that? Plus, I could ask you to please comment on either to revise or strike. Item I. That we've had up on our screen periodically today.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Escobedo's idea is excellent and ordinarily when we are going to. You know, as planners, when we're going to regulate something specific, we want to do it comprehensively and, and. You know, that, that got left by the wayside a while back and I would love to see that picked up. You know, we don't control planning department budget despite our attempts to. Really influence workload and their long range program. It's been a source of frustration, so you know, we'd have to probably run that back through and. It would end up somewhere at the bottom of the list, but putting it on the list is probably a good idea. So I'd support that. I would be a little bit. I think I'd be overly optimistic to think that it would get done anytime soon, but, but it's a good idea. It, it would help, I think, this, this particular item. I think I, I could possibly support the removal of I altogether. My question for staff, just to make it crystal clear that there would be no, there, as a result of this and, and Title 30. Outside of the coastal zone, there would be no procedural. Differences. Planning or building to. You know, the process by which somebody would apply for an STR, STVR. In those zones where it's currently allowed.
Absolutely, Commissioner Higgins.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Higgins. So now you've heard a number of thoughts and recommendations, Commissioner Bonderson. Could you please first comment on those before providing any supplemental comments?
Certainly, I, I will begin actually by agreeing with. The comments made by Commissioner Escobedo. I feel very similarly, however, I would take it one step further. For me, this isn't a policy change. If you say, it, it, excuse me. For me, this doesn't feel like a, like a simple language change. This cannot only be a language change. This is a policy change. It needs to really be approached as a policy change. I don't believe that we can do one without the other. And looking at it on a very microscopic level. Is the problem as far as I'm concerned. My recommendation to council is not to approve this current amendment as a singular amendment because it cannot stand alone. I, I agree that Title 30 and, and 28 should be drafted and initiated comprehensively to be looked at, studied and drafted together. Even though one will logically move faster and the other one more slowly since the coastal. Code is expected to be more complex and require additional cooperation with the coastal commission. I, I also believe that the, the council should. Consider pulling the trigger and having city staff designate a person or a team to begin drafting the short term. Rental ordinances to meet the state and the coastal mandates and also to respond to the judgments in those lawsuits. And, and of course, we can't forget to include the personalized conditions that apply to our unique city. Especially. Considering the fact that whatever this future ordinance looks like, it really needs to clearly define the permitting pathways in every variation. I, I feel like in the meantime, because that process is complex. There has to be some form of written, clear and extremely transparent set of guidelines. For the public to be able to use and understand. In order to get us through this temporary period. And regardless of what the regulations and enforcement policies end up looking like. I just feel like it needs to be drafted and discussed, adopted and approved as quickly as possible. And that really means making this entire issue a priority and not waiting any longer.
And Commissioner Bonderson, did you have any particular comment on either revising or removing? Section I of the draft ordinance, or did you have a larger overarching position on even moving any of this forward back to council as is?
Thank you so much, Chair Schwartz. I appreciate the question. And I do not feel comfortable approaching any portion of this document at this time. Because I don't feel like any of it can stand alone. And I don't feel comfortable putting it through and approving it at this time. Because it needs to be looked at comprehensively with all the other issues that we've discussed today. Especially considering the fact that all the commissioners have brought up a very wide range of issues that all. They are all important and they all belong in the conversation. So passing this forward without considering a lot of these issues would, would not make me feel comfortable today at all. Thank you for letting me.
Okay.
Add that.
Thank you for, thank you for that information. Let's see, did every, I want to just look down my list, did each of the commissioners have an opportunity to comment? It looks like they did before I go to my comments. But let me give one last opportunity to circle back around. Any final comments from any of the commissioners before I make mine? Commissioner Whiskin, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate Commissioner Escobedo's. Idea of formulating a STVR ordinance. I think it's a good one. I agree with Commissioner Higgins that, who said also it's a great idea. I think it will get pushed to the bottom of the pile, but as Commissioner Higgins said, even if it does, it's still there in front of them. And that's, that's a good thing. So I could support that as a recommendation to city council. I can also. In terms of section I, one I, I can support either what I had suggested. Or I can support total removal of I. That's the section where I was uncomfortable and we seem to have chewed on that forever now. So I can go either way on that. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you. All right. So I have a number of comments to make. I've been involved with this part of the municipal code. On the policies related to it for quite a number of years, as I mentioned. And. If we were making what's described as a minor text amendment. Outside of two factors, I would probably be more amenable to supporting. Some motion that I sense may be coming forward. First of all. We've had it quite a number of years to in earnest, take up. Municipal code language and related ordinances pertaining to hotels, short term rentals, home stays. This kind of panoply of potentially related uses and the zoning related to that. Not to be again revisionist, there were various reluctantly by staff to do that at various points in time. New zoning ordinance, LCP update. So to use the, the expression kicking the can down the road. That's in fact what our city has done, really going back to 2014 when we began the Enzo process. The timing is problematic in that we've had all these years. To take up very thoughtful, comprehensive, in-depth. Discussions, ordinance creation, more conversation with perhaps a subcommittee, including council members, which we did not do either. Council, then, the then council instituted a ban in a large portion of our city. Which significantly reduced very important general fund revenue. And as we know, in many other aspects of our society, societal life. Just by instituting a ban on something, whether at one time it was alcohol or marijuana over the years. We know what happens when you just say no, which is that the activity or behavior still occurs. And we don't have common sense regulations to ensure that an appropriate. An effective and respectful set of activities occurs that on balance. Provides some rights to private property owners, allows for short term, albeit not the standard definition of hotel use. And also brings in much needed general fund revenue to our city. Especially looking ahead to what we are going to face economically out of this coronavirus pandemic. When we have to face that very sobering reality in due time. So with that as the backdrop, I'm really hard pressed to see the request of us today as simply ministerial. I don't see it as just a text amendment in terms of. The context of what we're being asked to do. Just to say if we just change a word, we clarify something. I think that really wouldn't be the responsible way to look at this. I don't think it's the fully accurate way to look at this because of the contextual history we have. With the underlying policies, zoning uses, et cetera. Furthermore, as I referenced in my line of questioning. This March 3 coastal commission letter, I believe, could have really warranted. Some very quick response from our city and open lines of communication with the coastal commission. We've just gone through what actually, though painful in some regards, was ultimately a successful. Path with the coastal commission in getting our LCP update certified. That would have been a very important opportunity with the coastal commission to take this up. We didn't do it and even subsequent to March 3rd. There was, to my understanding from today, staff's response, no follow up communication. And I don't believe that we are putting ourselves in the best position with the commission. Coastal commission, that is, which we will need to be to get subsequent. Policies and ordinances certified by them in the coastal zone. I don't believe we're putting our best foot forward. I don't believe we're signaling. An, an interest of mutual respect to the commission that we did not respond to this letter. That concerns me. I don't know what to quite make of that. Today is not the day to further try to evaluate it. But that, that's part of where I don't, I can't connect the dots either. Quite frankly. Another issue that was of concern to me, and I want to come back to the council's March 3rd hearing. And of course, not speaking for the council, they spoke for themselves, but. When we look at our city charter, and this was mentioned, section 511, which is the adoption of ordinances and resolutions. And I'm looking at this language again. This came to us as a follow on to. Staff. Positioning, positing that the emergency ordinance being requested of approval by council. Was in alignment with our city charter, section 511. But when I look at this language, this is at the bottom of page C14 in our city charter under section 511. Any ordinance declared by the city council to be necessary as an emergency measure for the immediate preservation. Of public peace, health or safety. And containing a statement of the reasons for its urgency. Takes me back full circle to my comment and really my question first to Ms. Ostranger and my subsequent comments. That I don't, I don't believe there's a supportable. Rational. For the emergency measure. Again, it was in council's hands, but it brought it to us today as under the guise of a text amendment. And so for all of these reasons, I can't connect the dots in being comfortable with the full package. As proposed, now having said that, I want to, if I could, in closing, make some specific remarks to some of my colleagues. I think very, very well articulated comments and concerns to section I of the proposed ordinance. If I were to move this forward, I would support that section being completely struck, deleted, that is. Secondly, to Commissioner Escobedo's suggestion of letting the council know that we would strongly recommend. That some work be initiated, ordinance, new ordinance work on STVRs is clearly long overdue. Some might argue whether the ban has worked in the zones where the ban is in effect. But the fact remains, if we look at best practices in many other municipalities in this country. There are many cities and counties that have very thoughtful, common sense, rigorous. Requirements in managing short term vacation rentals. And, and while at the same time collecting business license fees. Trans even occupancy tax revenue. And so this balancing of some allowances with strict regulations. With fees that allow for supporting enforcement. To me is the right mix of sound and enlightened policymaking that I don't believe, I know, I don't. We don't have in place today. And I think that the current council will, would be well served to direct us to make that. A priority, given all of this time and expense and the lawsuits. That are still ongoing without a common sense, robust, effective set of policies and processes. To regulate short term vacation rentals. We can do this. Other communities are doing this. And so we can do it the Santa Barbara way. I know that's the term that's often used. But in the meantime, look at what we've left ourselves with, a shortage of revenue. We have rogue STVRs occurring. We have a very cumbersome process for applicants. Some of that was referenced by some of my colleagues today. Where, where, where questionably providing a process that allows the, what I'll call them honest broker. Applicants to come through the process and legitimize or get legitimized short term vacation rentals in the zone that's allowed. All of this, all of this prompts a much more robust. Policy discussion that the council, I don't believe was afforded on March 3rd. And with some of the new council members who don't have the history that I've discussed and other planning commissioners here today have referenced. Going all the way back to 2014. I think that a much larger work effort is before us. So with that, I will. Now call for a vote and we'll see how things unfold. Would someone like to begin by making a motion, Commissioner Whiskin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Okay, I'm going to move that we forward the draft ordinance. Amending the Santa Barbara Municipal Code, section 30 dash, sorry, 30.295.040P. To city council. oh four oh P, uh to city council for adoption, but striking uh section one, which is finding and determination, striking clause I from that section, and also uh recommending that we um that city council begin the process of formulating specific uh short-term vacation rental ordinance.
Commissioner Reed? We can't hear you yet. Do we need to assist Commissioner Reed?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
I second.
Okay, that's Commissioner Reed. Very good. Um are there, now we are to discussion on the motion, and I'd like to be clear as to where each of the commissioners are before we go to a vote. Any particular discussion, so there are no surprises with the vote. Commissioner Higgins, please. We cannot hear you, Commissioner Higgins.
Okay. Thank you, um Commissioner Schwartz, for the walk back down memory lane. Um I don't believe our motion should include anything associated with another program, so I can't support that particular motion. Um, there's just, there's no way to connect the dots. That wasn't on the agenda. It's, it's not going to get off the ground. I, you know, and I'm torn because that is a, that is the right way of do it, doing it. But um knowing what we know about, you know, staff's workload and the many, many other important programs that are in front of this, um I just can't, I can't support the motion.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Higgins. Uh then we have Commissioner Lodge.
Uh Chair Schwartz, I'm, I'm happy to uh take that off if Commissioner Reed, who made the second, agrees with me, take off the um the formulate a new ordinance.
Chair Schwartz?
Let's see, um, yes, please, um, Commissioner, oh, oh, Ms. Ostr-
Thank you, Chair Schwartz. I, I just want to, procedurally, um, the best way to do this would be to have a substitute motion presented where um I suppose uh if Commissioner Higgins wanted to do that, he could um bring a substitute motion, which would then be voted on before the existing motion or the motion on the floor.
I'm sorry, Ms. Ostringer, I got um accidentally muted and now unmuted. Ms. Ostringer, if you could come back on, please.
I'm back. So would you like me to, to repeat that?
If you wouldn't mind, please apologize.
Because the motion has been seconded, um i- it's possible to amend it if the seconder would agree, but um another more appropriate, probably procedural way would be to uh have a substitute motion put on the floor and to see if it could be seconded.
Okay, before we uh entertain a substitute motion, uh and by the way, this making of motions is exactly what's going to be included in a mini-training next month, uh that Ms. Ostringer is going to bring to us, so we can see how this uh live is so important in the work that we do. Commissioner Escobedo.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to make sure that I understand what the substitute motion would be. So we would approve the text amendment, but um remove the recommendation for the uh for council to initiate a work effort on short-term vacation rentals?
So the substitute motion hasn't been made. I would leave that to uh someone else, but uh and Commissioner Whiskom, I unfortunately interrupted her. Sorry, Commissioner Whiskom. So she has not yet presented her, necessarily presented fully, her suggested amendment.
I can either amend the motion, excuse me, I can either amend my motion, my original motion, and I, Commissioner Higgins' point is well-taken, um in terms of, this really wasn't on our agenda to, to formulate, um, you know, to ask the council to rec, to recommend to the council to formulate a short-term vacation rental ordinance. So I, I understand that, and I'm happy to amend my original motion, or I, Ms. Ostringer, I could withdraw it and make a new motion. Would that be acceptable? Ms. Ostringer?
Sorry, there's those two double buttons. It takes me a while to get there, and then there's the camera delay. Uh, the, the motion has been seconded, so it is on the floor.
Right.
But I can withdraw it.
Well-
Is that correct?
You could not vote in favor of it.
We can't withdraw at this time, uh and before we continue-
But, okay.
I would um suggest we, we hear, it, it sounds like there Commissioner Whiskom may wish to amend, and perhaps we could hear what Commissioner Escobedo has to say.
Commissioner Escobedo, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, I guess I'm just trying to figure out, because it's pretty clear to me, and I am, it appears that my fellow commissioners are kind of leaning the same way, where would be an appropriate time for us to make that recommendation, if not today?
Um Chair Schwartz, Commissioner Escobedo, uh if I may, it's, you could, you could make it here, I suppose. It's not on the agenda, but it relates to your decision with regards to how you're approving this, um or not approving the ordinance going forward. Uh, it's a work, it's clearly something that's on the city council's radar that they um didn't necessarily address or take up. So you, you could do it. Um, and I think city council will probably hear that from us when, when we bring this ordinance um forward, if that's where this is going. And then with respect to if Commissioner, uh, excuse me, Commissioner Whiskom wants to withdraw her motion, if you agree to the withdrawal, the motion may be withdrawn and a new motion may be made. So does that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Commissioner Higgins, Commissioner Lodge, did you have something further before I go to Commissioner Higgins?
Well, perhaps Commissioner Whiskom should be allowed to say-
Well, we first, I first, as a part of the parliamentary procedure, I first wanted to understand if you have, because we're in discussion now on a motion that's been first and seconded. So I want to understand if you have any particular comments on the motion before we circle all the way back.
No, not at this point, on the, on the motion that's on the, currently on the floor. I do not have any comments. Thank you.
It looks like Chair Schwartz's video has just paused. Um Chair Schwartz, we lost you for a moment. Do you mind doing an audio test, please? Um, hang on just one second. Okay, you can, um, I've sent you, um-
There we go. I'm back on.
Yeah, for whatever reason, um, you just, the, your webcam froze, but please go ahead.
Okay. Commissioner Higgins?
Um, I, you know, um, Commissioner Escobedo is got a really good idea, and um I guess the procedural way to, to alert uh the council to that you're, you know, your decision may be buttressed by some other uh counteraction later, um, you know, could simply be a straw poll or something like that in the record. It'll be in the minutes anyway, and we could, you know, do a straw poll on that. Uh, so I think that would be the way to handle that. It is, um, it, it is a long shot, um, but it's the right way to do it. I, I, I agree with the principle.
Speaking of a straw, yes, Commissioner Escobedo, that would be acceptable to you?
Correct. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, and, and with Commissioner Higgins' comment about straw poll, before we come all the way back around, Commissioner Whiskom, who made the motion, I did want to ask staff then if there's an opportunity today, uh perhaps separate from the mo, the recommendation motion, for us to take a straw poll on requesting that staff, excuse me, that council, direct the planning commission and staff to work on short-term vacation rental ordinance. Um, uh, I don't know if Ms. DeBusk wants to comment on that. I think she's probably in a position to, or, or Ms. Ostringer on a straw poll separate from a motion and a vote that we take on the item before us. Could one of you come back on and give us your sense of a straw poll, again, as a separate, separate vote?
I think if it was couched in the way it was generally raised, um, in Commissioner Whiskom's motion, particularly in regards to the fact that it has bearing on to those who will support the motion and those who will not support the motion if it's amended, you could make that request, um, or take that straw poll, but I would um seriously caution you from not discussing any policy issues. Uh, it would just simply have to be a straw poll uh with that statement.
Let me see if I'm clear, Ms. Ostringer. Are you saying that uh it would be acceptable to incorporate it into a substitute motion or not? That's, that's the question I was posing to you. Can it be incorporated, or do we need to take it separately as a straw poll?
It, as it was crafted, I think you could craft it into the, the motion as it stands on the floor. If the Commissioner Whiskom chooses to withdraw and the seconder agrees, and we have a new motion that doesn't include that, um, you could do a straw poll. It would probably be better to do a straw poll about who would be supportive of sending it to council and then um amending the motion.
Okay. Any other discussion on the motion before we come back to Commissioner Whiskom about a substitute? Just so we're all clear about where one another stands on voting yea or nay as we try to wrap this up. Commissioner Higgins, did you have anything else before we come back to Commissioner Whiskom?
Yeah, sorry, uh, chime back in. The, uh, the other component of this that I, I wasn't very comfortable with is the uh, uh, taking a uh turn over to the council first before heading up to ordinance committee. That was part of this. It was not very comfortable for me, so you, but I don't want to uh tie this thing up any longer, Commissioner Whiskom. Um, it's on the floor, and then I'd, I'd be, you know, interested in hearing the vote.
Thank you, Commissioner Higgins. Back to you, Commissioner Whiskom.
Thank you. Um, so I'm understanding that I can make a substitute motion, withdraw my motion, and okay. So my substitute motion will be two parts. The first part is, uh, stands as it was regarding the ordinance. So um forward the draft ordinance to um city council, uh, and recommend for adoption, but striking from it in section one, findings and determinations, uh, paragraph I. And then the second part of my motion is that the planning commission, uh, take a straw poll to um recommend that uh we formulate short-term vacation rental ordinance at some point in time, um, that the city council, that we are recommending to the city council that uh a short-term vacation rental ordinance be formulated at some point in time. Is that clear? And Mr. Reed, or Commissioner Reed, are you good with that?
I am.
Okay, great. Okay.
Okay, so does staff have, um, the staff have that language down now, Ms. DeBusk? If you could let us know whether you've noted that substitute motion in its entirety?
Yes, Chair Schwartz, I believe I have the motion in its entirety.
Okay, very good. So at this point, um, one last round-
This is, sorry, Tave, uh, this is Assistant City Attorney Tave Ostringer. Am I clear to understand that it was Commissioner Reed that seconded the motion, the substitute motion?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, um, so we have the substitute motion. Is there any discussion on the substitute motion, which I'm required to ask about before we go to a vote? Okay. Uh, now I'd like to ask staff to do a voice vote, and before I do that, before we ask staff to do that, Ms. Ostringer, uh, is it acceptable during the vote, and I have heard this number of decision-making bodies, to comment on the reasoning, very briefly, comment on the reasoning for an, a yea or nay, yes or no, on a vote, so that we're all very clear about the underlying, especially where there's a no vote? Of course, not a yes vote, but a no.
Uh, yes, usually what um we recommend, however, is that anyone, that it just be a yea vote, uh, without comment, and the no vote is, um, after the vote is taken, the um, the nos are given the opportunity to explain why they can't support the motion.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Ms. Ostringer, for that clarification. So with that, I would ask if it's Ms. DeBusk who's going to, uh, or, or Ms. Rydel, if you're still with us, to do a voice vote by Commissioner on the motion that Commissioner Whiskom made, seconded, so substitute motion, Whiskom, seconded by Reed. Let's do, let's go through, and we're, we're going to hear first, we're going to hear the yeses and the nos, but the yeses will come straight through, and then if there are nos, we're going to ask for a bit of clarification, please, for the record. So staff, if you would begin the voice vote?
Um, thank you, uh, Chair Schwartz. Um, I will begin the roll call vote.
I'm going to turn my uh webcam off for a moment here to allow the other six on.
All right, um, Chair Schwartz?
No, uh, and I think I'm going to comment after everybody votes.
All right. Vice Chair Whiskom?
Aye.
Commissioner Bonderson?
No, I will comment after.
Commissioner Escobedo?
Aye.
Commissioner Higgins?
No.
Would you like to comment now or save your comment for after?
I'll go after.
Commissioner Lodge?
Aye.
Commissioner Reed? All right, the um motion is passed with a vote of four to three. Thank you.
So Madam Chair, um, first a question, the, the straw poll was a part of that motion? But the point of the straw poll was that there'd be a separate straw poll?
That's my understanding from the intention of Commissioners Whiskom and Reed. Um, let's pause for a moment to confirm that that was the intention?
Yes, the intention was that after the original motion was taken, that we actually go back and do a straw poll.
Okay, we'll do that then. Thank you for asking that question, Commissioner Higgins.
Thank you.
Okay, we will do that in just, just a few moments. Back to you, Commissioner Higgins.
Okay, so I was a little bit all over the map uh during that, but I had some um uh last-minute reluctance uh based on some of the testimony or, or background that Chair Schwartz gave us, and I also, you know, I, in a perfect will, we would do these things at the same time. I think the no vote for me reflects my um, my lack of confidence that a, that a vote, I'm sorry, uh, STVR ordinance is, is anywhere close to um reality. Now, keep in mind, though, we don't really need to ask, I believe, and Ms. Ostringer can chime in again, but um we don't need to ask the council to, um, give us permission to initiate an ordinance. I think title thirty and maybe even twenty-eight, for that matter, allows the planning commission to initiate something in and of their own volition. So ordinarily, that's not the practice. We are more organized than that. We do take the time to have, um, you know- We are more organized than that. We do take the time to have, you know, long either joint city council or planning commission hearings to talk about long-range planning and that, and that's, there's more orderly sort of focus to directing staff in that regard. But so that the, the development of programs and ordinances by staff is is not easy and simple. And so my, my vote on, on this, although, excuse me, you know, you have the votes, it looks like it's going to carry forward. My, my reluctance was sort of the departure to short-term at the ordinance committee and and sort of the parameters by which we really are overly optimistic about, you know, balancing this or anything to do with STRs with a separate ordinance. So, but thank you for everybody's comments. I appreciate everybody's patience on this and especially Ms. Osteringers.
Commissioner Higgins, before, oh, there you are. I know that you have some time commitments later this afternoon, so I want to ask you, after we conclude this item, do you need to sign off because we're not quite finished with the rest of our business today?
No, I'm, I'm clear through 5:00 P. M.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Commissioner Bonderson, could you give a little bit of expounding on your no vote?
Of course, Madam Chair, thank you. I cannot support this motion because I do not feel like we can discuss or approve this language without it being drafted comprehensively in relationship with the full short-term rental ordinance. That's all-inclusive with all the factors that apply to Title 28 and Title 30 and in cooperation with the coastal committee and any other mandating bodies who have put their legal input into the, the procedure of how we need to move forward towards drafting ordinance. So for that reason, I cannot support a, a singular item without it being included within the bigger picture. I hope that's.
Thank you, Commissioner Bonderson. I'll just comment then briefly as to why I cannot support the substitute motion. I've, in my commentary, I think I gave fairly far-ranging and sufficiently detailed explanation of the history of what's brought us to today. And I think unfortunately, we could have taken another path as a city during a number of key policy work programs, new zoning ordinance, local coastal plan update. And without having done it at those times, the only emergency I see now which is not defined in section 511 of the city charter is that there's a desired, albeitly understandably so, a desire, certain desired outcome of litigation in the city's favor. And to me, I don't think it's supportable to change municipal code, text amendment or otherwise, only to hope for or to desire a tool, a legal tool, that will favorably change the outcome of litigation. So having said all of that, I certainly hope that the planning commission has an opportunity in conjunction with staff and the council to take up the, the right set of policy considerations, which I think have languished for too many years. We'll get to that straw poll in a moment. And though I am supportive of paragraph I being rescinded or removed from the draft ordinance, it's still not sufficient today. And I don't believe that the rationale for this text amendment rises to the level of, in just my own opinion, responsible policymaking or good governance. So with that, you know, that my vote is no. And now we can turn to a straw poll. Ms. DeBusk, could you please facilitate that for us? And again, the straw poll, let's articulate that. I don't know if we want to have a specific planning commissioner or staff articulate that for the record as we go through each commissioner for a vote. While we're, while I'm waiting for webcams to come on, is everybody still with us? While we're waiting for the webcams to come on, Commissioner Higgins raised an issue pertaining to this straw poll that I wanted to comment on. We do have within our authority the ability to initiate ordinance work, do ordinance work. The challenge for us, as you know, Commissioner Higgins, is that we don't write the ordinances. So of course, we need cooperation with and collaboration with staff and that folds back into their work program priorities, which takes us back to council and that's the full circle of all of this. So but that's not to say, and most of you know how I feel about this, that's not to say that we should shy away from asking council to direct staff and planning commission to undertake very important timely policy work. So again, up to council as it goes back to them. But Ms. DeBusk, are you in a position now to help us with a straw poll on the STVR ordinance work?
Sure, Chair Schwartz. So this will be a straw poll regarding whether or not the planning commission wants to recommend that city council direct staff to formulate a short-term vacation rental ordinance. So an aye vote would mean that yes, you want council, you want to recommend that council initiate that. A no vote would be that you do not want to recommend that. Let's start with.
And Ms. DeBusk, I'm going, I'm going to close my webcam to have you and then we can have five other commissioners come on. And as you take the vote, maybe then the commissioners can turn off since, again, we have a maximum of six webcams that can be on the screen at any one time.
Also, please excuse my interruption out of line. I just wanted to ask you if you could please explain again, the yes vote means council initiates, and then I lost you. So I want to make sure that I understand what the aye vote and the no vote are.
Sure, Commissioner Bonderson. A yes vote means that you want to recommend that city council initiate or direct staff to draft a short-term vacation rental ordinance.
Thank you.
At the risk of, can you hear me? So at the risk of really just taking a turn for the worse here on this, I'm asking too many questions. Commissioner Escobedo, again, a little bit of background as to what, what the, you meant by, you know, the intent of the ordinance. As I assume it means some level of permissibility and, or just, maybe just start with that.
Sure. I mean, currently, right now, we have some level of permissibility. So really, the intent is providing a more robust answer to the problem of rogue, short-term vacation rentals and a more more robust direction to people who do fall inside those hotel zones that maybe want to convert. It doesn't mean making it easier to have short-term vacation rentals. It could still be very onerous, but I think just lumping it together with hotels and that definition is not adequate to meet the, the issue. And I think that the two operate very differently and they have different challenges. And the challenges with short-term vacation rentals, I think, demand a little bit more than a few words in a definition.
This is Assistant City Attorney Osteringer. Sorry to interrupt you, Commissioner Higgins. Commissioner Escobedo, if you could also explain how that helped you support or not support the, you did support, support the, the motion on the floor, please?
Yes, so I think in the short term, this text amendment that we made today works, but I was thinking in the long term, and I wouldn't have been able to support the motion had there not at least been a recommendation to look at the long-term method that we use to address short-term vacation rentals.
Thank you. That works for me in terms of an explanation. I appreciate that.
Yep, thank you.
A straw vote or a poll, I don't know for, I'll just indicate support for that. I'll also note that I probably won't be on the commission by the time it comes back for a final vote. It'll be a long time. Hey, go ahead.
Commissioner Higgins, ye of little faith.
Went forward to hearing your public comment.
Who said that? Commissioner Reed, well done, Commissioner Reed. Okay, so are there, before we ask Ms. DeBusk to, to take the straw poll, any other thoughts, any other comment, questions, clarifying questions at this point about what we're going to be taking the vote on? Commissioner Bonderson?
Yes, I would like to know, Madam Chair, if when we do make a recommendation such as this that returns to council for them to deliberate on and to put the conditions together when they address any direction to staff, if we could also request a timeline be placed on this, this work project from staff to draft the ordinance?
Well, that's an interesting point, Commissioner Bonderson. May, if I may, as chair, just please, just a moment, just insert myself. I'm not sure that asking for a timeline, however, what I have seen occur at council on many occasions is asking staff, directing staff to return to council with a timeline, you know, on the spot, not being able to provide a timeline, but certainly returning to council once some consideration, you know, sharpening of the pencil, so to speak, has been done, return to council with a timeline. Maybe that's the more sort of a feasible and appropriate request. But I'll, I'll come back to the rest of the commission on that.
Chair Schwartz, if I may, that's not part of the motion and it would be outside of the straw poll. And it's also a policy decision by council.
Yes, right. We understand. Okay. All right. Unless there's anything further, I think we're ready for Ms. DeBusk to take our voice vote on the straw poll if we're all clear about the content of the straw poll. Anything else from Ms. DeBusk or Ms. Osteringer before we go to the poll? And did we lose Commissioner Higgins already? He, I know he's got to sign off in 10 minutes. There you are. Great. Okay, let's do the straw poll before Commissioner Higgins has to go to Higginsland.
Okay, thank you. I will start with the straw poll. Commissioner Reed?
Aye.
Commissioner Lodge?
No, because I don't, I short-term vacation rentals are being approved. There is a method in, in place. And I don't see the purpose of this, I, and just what the planning commission is asking for or the need. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Higgins?
Aye.
Commissioner Escobedo?
Aye.
Commissioner Bonderson?
Aye.
Vice Chair Wiskom?
Aye.
And Chair Schwartz?
Aye. Thank you for facilitating that, Ms. DeBusk. So unless there is anything else from staff, from Ms. Osteringer in particular on this item, I think we are concluded. Ms. Osteringer, could you just confirm for me that we are now concluded on this item for today?
There's nothing further on this item that I can see, Chair Schwartz.
Okay, thank you so much for being with us all this time, Ms. Osteringer, and answering all the questions and and I'm sure this, this conversation is, will, will not be finalized today. That's for certain. More to follow. Thank you. So with that, again, our, our business is not concluded yet. I know, as I've mentioned, Commissioner Higgins may need to leave us, but I wanted to make sure we had all seven of the commissioners involved for this vote. I'd like to take a, let's see, it's by my clock, it says 4:52. I'd like to come back at 5 o'clock for the remainder of our business. Let me canvas the rest of the commissioners. Do any of you have any other deadlines that you can't stay with us for the remainder of our business today? I'm not hearing anybody. Okay, and we will try to move through, but we do have an important staff presentation by Ms. Metzger that's been delayed from a prior hearing date, so we want to make sure we give her sufficient time. And then we have our administrative agenda, including the very important rebalancing of our advisory board liaison appointment. So with that, again, I now have 4:53. Let's come back at 5 o'clock. If we could, staff, put up our recess, reconvene shortly slide and mute us all and we will be back at 5 o'clock to continue on. Thank you. After a short recess, the April 16th, 2020 City of Santa Barbara Planning Commission meeting. And our next item, which is a discussion item, and the staff presentation on the 2020 census. Do we have Ms. Metzger with us this afternoon by webcam and audio?
Hi, yes, thank you, Chair Schwartz. This is Jessica Metzger. I'm ready to give the presentation. And so just to give you a background on the census and our efforts in the County of Santa Barbara. The County of Santa Barbara CEO's office and the Santa Barbara Foundation, which is a local nonprofit, convened a group of nonprofits, faith-based organizations, and local and state representatives to look at how best to do outreach for the census in our county back last year. And we held regular meetings to do different parts of outreach, looking at different parts of our populations and different parts of our counties. And in the beginning of this year, we started doing just general educational PowerPoints to various groups like the one that you're going to see today. We were going to be before you in February, but none of the meetings happened then. And then we were scheduled in March, and then COVID came. So we're here today doing this webinar, and I'm really happy to be able to give you a background on the census and also how we pivoted our actions to react to our new normal here today. So.
We're very pleased to see you, Ms. Metzger.
Yes, thank you.
We're very pleased to see you.
Great. And so the history of the census is that it happens every 10 years. And a fact that most people don't know that it's actually written into our constitution. So it was something that our founding fathers felt was very important. The first census took place in 1790, and conducting the census is one of the largest peacetime operations undertaken by the government. And to give you an idea of what that means as far as how many people are employed by the census, in the County of Santa Barbara itself, back in February, we had hired over 4,000 people to work on the census. So that is a lot of jobs created by the census. So it matters because it really helps our community, both the county and the city, get its fair share of federal funding. It creates jobs, and it helps our community plan for the future. It also supports public safety and emergency preparedness, and draws our congressional, state, and local district lines, along with school districts and voting precincts. Next slide. So this year, something new happened with our census. We introduced the ability to fill out the census online. This is the first year that that has been an option. And back in mid-March, most households in the County of Santa Barbara got a letter asking them to go online and fill out the form. Of course, some people, it's hard to get access to online resources, so you still have the ability to fill it out over the phone or request a paper form, or get a paper form at this point in time. And so the households that don't fill out the questionnaire in the first period would get another letter requesting them to, or reminding them to fill out the census. And then this last week, paper forms were distributed to over 64 million households across the nation. So that's 22% of US households received that paper form. This was one of the ways that we pivoted from the previous direction where we were going to have people out on the street going door to door with iPads and iPhones at that level. And now the paper forms were increased dramatically to many households. Next slide. Next slide, please. So this is a schedule of the dates we had before COVID, and then our revised schedule. So before this new normal, we were basically ending the census on July 31st of this year. We have extended that till August 14th at this point in time. So the window to fill out the census online or on the phone, or with that self-reporting paper form, has been extended to August 14th. And then we also obviously pulled all of the enumerators, the people that were going to go door to door off the street and change their jobs to be part of the call centers that are taking those census phone calls. And then also have looked at extending the date for the census to close even further than August 14th. So it's before Congress right now to extend the census to April of next year. That hasn't been approved yet, but that's what the federal level is happening for the census. Next slide. So what should you know about the census? So one of the important things that happened with the census and that you'll probably remember being big news last year was that there is no question about an individual's citizenship status on the census. And there's a lot of reasons for that not to be a question, especially in our community here. Just think about how we have English, our kids here from other countries to learn English in school. They are still using the resources that census monies go to. They drive on the roads, they take the bus, they might go to healthcare clinics. And so those are all things that use federal funding based on number of people and households that we get from the census. And then no personal information collected can be used against you or shared with other federal agencies. So your information is protected and kept confidential by the census. And then another thing that's really, that everyone watching and all of our commissioners should know is there are a lot of scams surrounding the census, even in our community. And I have given this presentation to probably about 15 or 20 different boards or commissions or staff meetings across the city, and we found two scams just in those meetings with people that had been being put on various people via text messages or emails. And so the census will never ask for payment to fill out the questionnaire. They'll never ask for your social security number or any sort of bank information. So it's important to share that with your neighbors when you're talking to anyone about the census from six feet away, of course, that these kinds of questions are definitely scams. Next slide. So the census counts everyone where they live and sleep most of the time, even if the living arrangement is temporary. So if you have someone that recently got a job in Santa Barbara and is sleeping on your couch or in your spare bedroom while they look for a place to live, they count for your residence. And it's really not that long of a form. It only takes about 10 minutes to fill out. So it has seven questions that ask the number of people living or staying at your house, whether your home is owned or rented, and the sex, age, race, and origin of the people, each of those people in your household, and then how they're related to each other. So those are the basic questions that are asked in the census. Next slide. And so because we're in the census currently, I was able to pull up some response rates to share with you, which I hadn't done because it hadn't really started at my previous presentation. So we're doing really good in the County of Santa Barbara and the city. And of the nation's households, only 49% have responded to the census, but in the county, 52 have. And in the city, 54 have. And in looking at these numbers, so I started this presentation, updating it last Friday. And just coming from last Friday to updating the numbers this morning, had a 3% rise on the response rate, which was really good because before it'd been kind of flat. It was just in the decimal digits of rise. So I think that what we have done as far as outreach has really helped communities. So as the city, as an organization itself, we started doing multimedia approaches to advertising the census and the importance of it on Facebook and Instagram and Twitter and Nextdoor. And then we've also held spots in our city news brief, which is an email that goes to around 3,000 households in the city, showing different parts of the census. So we'd focus on children and why it's important for them to count, or emergency services, and why it's important for those kind of things. So we've done a lot of messaging that way. In addition, we also included an insert in the water bills that went out both in February and in March on the census. And we've also done other kind of spots at a county level on the local radio stations and TV stations, so various public service announcements. So those are how that word has gotten out to the people of our city. Next slide, please. And so this is a map of our city. Oh, it kind of got a little changed from before. So the numbers aren't next to each other, but it's 48% for the area by the Mission Street label, and then 59 up upper state. And so our rates for the city as a whole have been increasing as well. So you'll see the Mesa is 50%, and then the Riviera is 60 or 57, depending on what track. But the encouraging information is that our hard-to-count populations from the last census are all above 40% right now also, which is really good news for us, according to the state district meetings that we held. They said that they're really happy with those results coming in. Next slide. And so one of the other things that I didn't really touch on that is important to note is that for every person not counted in the census, we, as a county, can lose up to $2,000 per person for every year up until the next census. So that's $20,000 a person. That's a lot of federal funding that can go to parks, that can go to schools, that can go to providing school lunches for children. It can go to roads. There's just a myriad of things that depend on these numbers being accurate. And so we're really hoping that our numbers continue to rise like they have been over the next month. And yeah, I think that concludes my presentation. I do have one short video of one of the PSAs. It's my favorite to show you. I think it's only two or three minutes. If to me, wouldn't mind, or Mr. Bolton wouldn't mind pulling that up.
And everyone who lives with us is special, like my aunt, who took me on my first bus ride to the library, or my older cousin, who walked me to my first day of school, even my mom's friend and her baby who live with us.
The census informs funding for schools, roads, healthcare, and more. So count everyone in your home, including all children, on the 2020 census. It's your chance to help them for the next 10 years. You can respond online, by phone, or by mail. Shape your future. Start here. Learn more at 2020census.gov.
I'm not sure if everyone can see that. Mine was kind of blocky. But all of the census PSAs have also been playing on city TV since February as well, in between various meetings that are posted there. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Metzger. Well, what an important and feel-good project, I would think, that you have right now in being the project manager. To the commission, any questions? And I'm going to go ahead and drop off to let all the other commissioners come on. One moment. And Commissioner Bonderson, any questions for, why don't we just do this because of the hour? We're at about 5:16. Why don't you just combine any questions and comments so we can move through this to the last item? Well, next to the last item today. Commissioner Bonderson, let's start with you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's so nice to see you, Ms. Metzger. Thank you for your presentation. I wanted to ask a very specific question about the methods that are currently being used, especially under the current conditions with the stay-at-home orders and so on. When a response is not received, I imagine you can actually see which address you have not heard from. How are we holding those families accountable and receiving? and receiving information once we acknowledge that we haven't received the census from a certain household?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Bonderson. So everyone that hadn't responded to the census currently, last week, was sent that paper form. And so we're hoping that seeing that form and not having to do the extra step of going onto the website or calling will help them understand the importance of filling it out. And also our advertising campaigns have all kicked up in gear as well. And we'll be doing some additional media spots with some of the local news channels in the next couple of weeks with some of our other elected officials. And we hope that that's successful. And then the census hasn't ruled out people being on the street to knock on the doors at one point in time. We just can't tell with the everyday things change when that's going to be available, if at all.
And also the second question, and it's my last question. How are we as a government handling the more sensitive residents that we have in our community who may feel suspicious or unsafe in responding? Because although the documentation says that the response is not being reported to other entities, there's a lot, you know, fear wrapped around letting us know where you are. How has that been responded to?
So, yeah, Commissioner, when I talked about our coalition of partners, a lot of those are nonprofits that deal with what we call the hard-to-count populations, which in Santa Barbara are primarily Hispanic and Latino, and then also children under five were really undercounted last time. So we have a bunch of nonprofit partners that have gone out early, like starting in March, and really tried to educate the people that they provide services to of the importance of filling out the census and the importance of that to the services that they're providing in the future. And so the food bank, this is just something that we pivoted to. The food bank and all of the bags that go out to people collecting is putting census paraphernalian swag in there as well as like just quick information. This is why it's important, both in English and in Spanish. We have the Housing Authority has been working closely with all of their residents to make sure they understand that. And there's a lot of other nonprofit partners that work in healthcare and domestic violence solutions that have also been really trying to reach those populations and assure them that it is a safe thing to do.
Thank you so much, Ms. Metzger. I wanted to just end by saying thank you to you and to your team and whoever else is working locally who have actually acknowledged an extra effort to count our student population, especially the ones who are here not with a formal university, such as the students who are studying English for a short period of time, to be able to count them so that we know that those spaces are being rented and that we have a headcount in general. I think that's an amazing, amazing improvement. Thank you so much for that effort.
Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Escobedo, please. Questions and comments to Ms. Metzger?
Thank you, Madam Chair. A couple of questions. First, are those PSAs going out in Spanish as well?
Yes, so the PSAs are done in both English and Spanish, and they're playing in both languages on our city TV and also through the various news networks that we, or TV networks that we put them on.
Fantastic. And then last question is, how are we going about, especially given the current circumstances, in counting our unsheltered neighbors?
So that is something that I don't have the exact information on. We were supposed to have our count of the transient population on March thirty-first. So that was supposed to happen right when all of the COVID really blew up. And it's unfortunate because we had volunteers lining up. We had, I think it was, I want to say it was around four hundred people that were going to be involved in that count that were kind of put on hold. And so I could ask, because that's kind of outside of the outreach team, but I could ask our census representative for that answer and send it to all of the commissioners, if that would be okay.
That would be fantastic. Thank you, and thank you for all you're doing.
Thanks.
Commissioner Whiskom, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to thank Ms. Metzger. It's wonderful to see your face again. It's been a while.
I know.
And your voice. But I wanted to thank you very much for the presentation. I thought it was very thorough. One of my questions got answered by Commissioner, when Commissioner Bonderson asked it. My other question was, what is the typical percentage response in Santa Barbara for the census? You showed us the current numbers, and I just wondered what... Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, so Vice Chair Whiskom. So in the last census, we were around eighty percent of an estimated count. So it was pretty low. And that's a lot of money lost. And so that's why both at the state level and the county level, we threw a lot of resources at the census this year. The state had $187 million that they allocated towards census outreach, which was the biggest that they've ever allocated out of the legislature for that. So we're really hoping to have better numbers this year.
That's, that's great. Well, it's, that's great information to have, and I wish you success in that. I'm, we filled out, my husband and I filled it out. It took no time at all. It was really an easy process. I think that the emphasis should really be on the fact that it's an easy process with very few questions and not a lot of personal information. And I hope that you continue to, as we shelter at home, I hope you continue to get the message out to the community through the news networks, you know, and a lot of people are watching them because of COVID-19, to, and urge them to fill it out because it does impact our ability to get funding for things. And your statistics on that were really incredible. I had no idea. So I wish you good luck, and I hope that you continue to get the message out. And by August, is it fourteenth? Is that the deadline? I hope by August fourteenth, we have ninety-plus percent participation. So thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Ms. Metzger, I don't recall if you've touched on this, so my apologies if you have. But from that podcast that I shared with everyone, I'm recalling that our Secretary of State Alex Padilla mentioned in that podcast, and this is important for our community, that with fortunately the citizenship question not being included in the census and that there is a prohibition of any census information being used by Border Patrol or Border Enforcement for our non-citizen undocumented residents, we want to encourage them to participate so that there is no law, adverse law enforcement actions taken against them. Can you talk about that, if you've discussed that with the county or any other partners regarding those important provisions?
Yes, Chair Swartz. So what part of the census is, is that that data is locked down and not shared with any other departments or agencies at the federal level? And so that's very clear. And also it's not accessible to anyone. What we have and how I got those response rates is by track. So it's not dialed down to block or to house on a block or anything of that level. So no one could take that data and disseminate it to see where other people that might be identifying as Latino or Hispanic might live. As far as more discussions with the county and our outreach group, that's what we know as a fact, but we haven't really talked much more about it.
Okay, very good. Thank you. I don't have any questions. I was just very eager for you to come present to us. And so today was really welcoming. Thank you so much. If none of the other commissioners have questions and comments, I think that concludes the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you. And now we're ready to move on to second to the last portion of our hearing today. It's the Administrative Agenda Committee and Liaison Reports. A first staffing, staff hearing officer, where I'm the primary, and I want to share, especially with the new commissioners, just a very brief description because I think some are not familiar with the role of the staff hearing officer. It was created in 2006. Susan Riordan is our staff hearing officer. And it was created to improve and simplify the discretionary planning process for projects that in general, and I want to underscore in general, are not controversial and typically do not involve major land use policy considerations. A short list of the types of projects Ms. Riordan hears are modifications, performance standard permits, development plan approvals of one to three thousand square feet, lot line adjustments, some coastal development permits, again, select ones, the simpler ones, minor amendments to conditions of approval and adoption of negative declarations for show eligible projects. I watched on replay both the March eleventh and April eighth hearings. And just in the interest of time, I'll say that all of the projects were approved. They varied from accessory dwelling structure to a front yard modification, a parking mod, a setback mod, just to give you a sense, open yard mod, and so forth. So no, I don't think additional details are really necessary for today. If we have more time and if it's warranted in another one of our hearings, I'll provide more details. But that's my report, and I'll now go to other liaison reports. Any other commissioners? Oh, please, Commissioner Whiskom.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a rather lengthy report from the Water Commission. They met this morning, and it was, it was really an amazing meeting. So if you'll just bear with me, I'm going to read it. I wrote up notes on, I took notes when I was listening to it. So they actually met for over two hours this morning. But Mr. Hagmark opened with a COVID-19 update, and especially appreciated was his main message, which is our water supply is safe and reliable. He showed a series of PSAs on our water and wastewater that is being rolled out to our community. Water main replacement projects are suspended at this time because temporary supply cutoffs are inappropriate due to our shelter-in-place ordinance. He also talked about billing assistance for our financially challenged customers. Then the Water Commission moved on to what's called an Enhanced Urban Water Management Plan Update and Stakeholder Communication and Engagement Plan. And the city's primary water supply management tool has been its Long-Term Water Supply Plan, which is the LTWSP, that was last updated in 2011. And the goal of the LTWSP is to evaluate the adequacy and reliability of the city's water supply and provide a long-term view of how the city's supply would be managed. In the past, the city has also submitted a required urban water management plan to the California Department of Water Resources every five years. Since the UWMP mandated requirements have increased, that's the state requirement, the city is working to meld the supply planning efforts of the of the Long-Term Water Supply Plan into the development of its 2020 Urban Water Management Plan, the state mandated plan. The results will be an Enhanced Urban Water Management Plan, and that's what they're going to call it, an Enhanced Urban Water Management Plan. So they're going to go to one plan. And it's a five-step plan to formulate the Enhanced Urban Water Management Plan, and it was presented with aim to roll it out to the public in April of 2021. Water Vision Santa Barbara, the branded name for the enhanced plan process, intends to define an equitable, resilient, cost-effective water supply portfolio. Stakeholders and public engagement throughout the planning process will be critical for the development of a successful plan. And here's the really interesting part. There's a stakeholder committee that was reviewed by the commission and includes a park and recreations commission, since our parks constitute a major use of water in the city. Commissioner Davis requested that a planning commission representative be added to the stakeholders committee, and the commission unanimously agreed to that request. So there will be a planning commissioner on the stakeholders, on the stakeholders committee in addition to a Parks and Recreation Commissioner.
Excellent.
And I'm sorry, I've got to give the COVID-19 update, if you don't mind. Am I taking up too much time?
Absolutely not.
Okay. So we went on to preliminary estimates of the COVID-19 financial impacts to water and wastewater funds. And the largest impact to the water fund is expected to come from reduced rate revenues in the commercial and industrial rate classes. There's no surprise there. Although a portion of the water use that was previously metered at commercial establishments will now be metered at residences, staff estimates the commercial water demand, which is driven by commuters and tourism, will experience a seventy to ninety percent reduction in the last quarter of this fiscal year. This drop in commercial demand is estimated to reduce revenues by approximately one and a half million dollars or $500,000 a month for the period of April through June. And although it's too early to predict the long-term revenue impacts from the COVID-19 pandemic, staff expects a continued reduction in projected commercial and industrial rate revenue through fiscal 2021 as commercial industrial sectors slowly get back to normal operations. Since the six percent increase in water rates recommended by the consultant that I talked about at our meeting last week, pre-COVID-19, is unlikely at this point, staff presented four scenarios of COVID-19 impacts to compare with the pre-pandemic scenario, including scenarios with no increase, which gave great impacts to policy reserves and the capital program. Mr. Hagmark concluded that a good middle ground might be a three percent increase that results in a $3.73 monthly increase to single-family residences and a $5 million reduction in the water main replacements program for FY 2021, but maintaining a reserve policy of 100%. This assumes no water supply agreement with Montecito. The wastewater fund, like the water fund, will see the largest immediate financial impact from the COVID-19 pandemic in its commercial and industrial rate revenues. Important to note is that the wastewater fund reserves are at 70% of policy levels. Three scenarios were compared to the pre-COVID-19 statistics. In all three, there are impacts to the capital program, including deferral of the Braemar lift station rehabilitation project and the sanitary sewer overflow funding, which is vital to reducing overflows. Staff concluded with reserves at 70% of policy and no rate increase in 2021 would result in one and a half million dollar reduction in the sanitary sewer overflow projects and deferral of the Braemar rehabilitation in FY 21 and FY 22. This was the most impactful scenario presented. I encourage anyone who's interested in the full presentation to watch the Water Commission meeting of today. It started at eight o'clock this morning, April sixteenth. And they also received a wastewater collection system annual report. I'm sorry to be so lengthy, but I felt that based on the COVID-19 pandemic, this information was really vital for the commission and any members of the public to receive, as well as our participation in the Enhanced Urban Water Management Plan Update. One commissioner will be appointed to that. So thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Whiskom, did I hear you? Commissioner Whiskom, did I hear you? That was such a broad and deep report. Thank you so much. Yes, did I hear you mention no, there's an assumption of no deal with Montecito?
No, it's not an assumption. The scenarios that they showed were, and actually they're encouraged by a deal with Montecito, but the, that's the impression I got. But the assumptions that they showed included several scenarios with with no deal with Montecito. And then one that was much less impactful to revenues that included a deal with Montecito. But their point was, when they got to that one, that there will be capital improvements that will need to be made to implement a deal with Montecito. So there'd be a kind of a lag time to to actually make, to actually feel the the revenue improvement. So does that, I hope that answers your question.
Yes. And then did you mention the timing on a planning commissioner being appointed to this new?
No, I didn't. I didn't get a sense of that. This is, they're in phase one of the Enhanced Urban Water Management Plan Update. So I think that, which is, you know, kind of the formulation of it, they have formulated the stakeholders committee. It was shown today on the, in the presentation. And that's when Commissioner Davis recommended that a planning commissioner joined that. And and I did speak in public comment during that. They were thinking that a planning commissioner should should join that because of our housing policies. And I also made the point, it's not only our housing policies, it's our sea level rise adaptation plan, which I think, you know, is is also an important component of any any Enhanced Water Management Plan they come up with.
Great.
Moving forward. So and I'm sorry for the lengthy presentation. It was it was an incredibly informative meeting. So I do encourage anyone to watch it. Thank you.
And then just to staff, if you would make a note, if there's a new stakeholder committee that's being formed, that we should add to our 2020 PC liaison list as we're looking to rebalance, please do that. I guess that would be to Mr. Busk to follow up on that.
Yeah, Chair Schwartz, I think it's going to be Water Vision Santa Barbara, which is the branded name for the Enhanced Urban Water Management Plan. So that's going to be the name of the group that includes the stakeholders. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Mr. Busk?
Yes, thank you, Chair Schwartz. I recommend that we hold off appointing someone to that until we know when they're going to meet and how often, so that we can make sure that it aligns with the commissioner's schedules at the time they move forward with meetings.
Very good, very wise, Mr. Busk. Thank you. Commissioner Lodge?
Thank you, Madam Chair. To tie in with Commissioner, I share Whiskom's presentation. I've been in communication with Mr. Hagmark, who's the the water czar in Santa Barbara, about making a presentation to the planning commission on what has happened over the last years. It's about 10 years since the existing water plan was adopted. And, you know, certain things have changed. The general plan at that time had the AUD projects possibility. We expected that, but then we have ADUs added that were unexpected. So I hope we will be getting a presentation on how it is fitting in with what what was anticipated in relation to water use and our water supplies. I do want to report on yesterday's Historic Landmarks Commission meeting. Mr. Busk, did you get my image? And there it is. I'm bringing this because it is something that will be coming to the planning commission, not on a design basis, but on a need for an exception to, excuse me, the height limit. On, this is at, I think, 57 feet and the height limit is 45 feet. I can't remember ever being at a design review hearing where a project received such a pogrom. There wasn't anybody that liked this. If I may get my notes, the project was described as utterly, utterly, in no way at all, meeting with the design review standards for Pueblo Gego. And they didn't even want to send it on to the planning commission. They had suggestions about other ways to handle this, including putting it actually on the top deck. These are, I'm sorry, these are solar array panels that are all the way up to the footprint of the building. So they come right to the edge. Another suggestion was to pull it back from the edge. And essentially, they gave them, this was concept, first concept review, and they gave them voted to give them an indefinite continuance. So they're going to expect some really different solutions to to the problem of how they put, place these panels on the roof deck. Thank you.
Very, very good. Thank you, Commissioner Lodge. Any other reports from any of the other commissioners? I'll wait for a moment in case anybody needs to turn on their webcam. Otherwise, I think we are ready to go to our last item, which is revisions to Advisory Board liaison appointments. And Mr. Busk, if you would come back on and help to facilitate this, please. Mr. Busk, I'm sorry, I have, while you're getting ready there, I was going to ask Commissioner Higgins to provide one liaison update. He and I are co-primary liaison to what's identified as the Highway 101 Improvements item or project. One of the parallel projects within the city is the Coast Village Road, Olive Mill Road Roundabout Project. I've been involved with that for some time now. In fact, last year, Commissioner Thompson and I were the co-pr primaries. So on the roundabout project, I'll just give just a few sentences by way of an update for my communications with staff. The application between the county and the city has now been deemed complete for the roundabout project. The next step is environmental review, which staff tells me may take 90 days. Following that environmental review, there will be a joint City Planning Commission, Montecito Planning Commission hearing. Staff will be working out the technological details for that. Following joint planning commission hearing or hearings, it will then ultimately go to final design review. And there again, there will be a joint design review between the city architectural board of review and the Montecito Board of Architectural Review. So wanted to let everybody know what's happening with that roundabout project. And I think that's it. Now back to you, Mr. Busk.
Thank you, Chair Schwartz. I think perhaps the quickest way to go about updating our PC liaisons is to identify if there are any assignments that anyone would like to either offer up or any that perhaps Commissioner Reed would be interested in, rather than going through absolutely every board and commission.
Sure, let's do that. That sounds most efficient. Commissioner Whiskom?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to, I know that Commissioner Reed is interested in the downtown parking committee on the alternate on that. And I'm happy to move that category to Commissioner Reed.
If I may, Madam Chair. Commissioner Reed and I, we were discussing it. And if, since you're giving up the alternate, I could take the alternate because I'm still very interested in the downtown parking and I plan on attending all of the meetings. But we would make Commissioner Reed a primary, since I have other primaries as well. If that works for everyone.
Thank you.
So that would make Commissioner Reed the primary and move Commissioner Estebado to alternate. Is that okay with you, Commissioner Whiskom, if you come off that item altogether?
Yes, that's, that's fine. I was planning on coming off of it anyway as the as the alternate to to give Commissioner Reed a chance to do it. So I'm glad, I'm glad that there are some committees that people are actually kind of fighting over.
Especially 7:30 AM.
I know, 7:30 AM and not recorded. So you have to.
Not recorded. A number of us have done that, Commissioner Reed.
Yeah, be there or be there or be square. Yeah. So I have a feeling these two will give a very great report on downtown parking committee. And it's, which is a very important subject coming up, you know, given our COVID-19 impacts on downtown parking. So thank you very much. And I also, Commissioner Reed and I talked about Water Commission. I'll leave that for him to discuss and where he stands on that. But we'll see where this goes. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Okay, do we want to go right into Water Commission, since you've been, you just mentioned that, Commissioner Whiskom?
Yeah, so.
Yeah, okay. Go for it.
Commissioner, Commissioner Reed?
Yeah, thank you, Chair Schwartz. So I think you and I both received an email from Commissioner Higgins regarding the Plaza de Leguera Subcommittee.
Oh, Commissioner Reed, can we just still touch on Water Commission and get get that out of the way first? That's why I had Commissioner Whiskom on the screen still.
This is, this is. May I interrupt for one sec? I think, I think the way Commissioner Reed and I, when we had our little discussion, we'd see how many principles he ended up with. So Madam Chair, if I may suggest that we just let Commissioner Reed, he did some negotiations and let him do that first before we actually go to Water Commission. I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
We'll delay Water Commission. Back to you, Commissioner Reed.
Thank you, Chair Schwartz. And yeah, thank you, Commissioner Whiskom. So yeah, we had discussed Water Commission. If I was not able to get another primary. However, Commissioner Higgins just indicated that he would be willing to give me his primary on the Plaza de Leguera Subcommittee. Which if that works in the context of all these assignments, I'd be more than happy to take.
Okay. And we don't have an alternate on that. Now it's, you know, they meet as needed, no alternate. I don't know if Commissioner Whiskom, you, from your experience, would there be a benefit to have an alternate? We have, we now have two primaries. Well, we have had two primaries. So if Reed and Whiskom are the two primaries and Commissioner Higgins had to sign off, he's not here right now. What do you think about an alternate? Just as a placeholder, making it an alternate?
Madam Chair, I actually think we do not require an alternate. Our meetings are kind of consecutive in terms of our work program going through. So an alternate that sits in on one meeting really doesn't have the benefit of the full discussion that's that's gone on with the commission, with the committee over a long period of time. So I think we're all set and I and I'm confident that, given Commissioner Reed's enthusiasm and my enthusiasm about the Plaza Subcommittee, we'll cover it, we'll cover it very well.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, great. Commissioner Reed, back to you. Any other areas of interest, whether or not you've already had any sidebar communications with other commissioners as you look down the list?
Yes, Chair Schwartz. So out of the other conversations I've had, I had a conversation with Commissioner Bonderson regarding HLC. Tentative. So I would defer to Commissioner Bonderson to confirm if that was something she'd be willing to offer.
The alternate, right? That's what you said. You cut out for a moment there.
Yeah, I didn't hear him either.
Correct.
Okay, alternate.
Yeah, that was, that was for the alternate.
Okay.
I have already spoken with Commissioner Reed as well as Madam Chair. Thank you for the time you spent helping me understand our commitments. I wanted to just confirm with the group that at this moment, I currently have the least responsibility. And by giving up HLC as an alternate, it shouldn't impact me at all because I haven't had any responsibility as alternate so far. But for the moment, I won't be adopting any other place, placeholders. So as long as that's acceptable, I have no problem giving up HLC as an alternate at this time.
Okay, very good. And I would just say, Commissioner Bonderson, as you're now experiencing, ABR is one of the most active kind of, yeah, with a full portfolio on a regular basis of items that are very germane to our work on planning commission. So I think that probably covers like a bandwidth of your time and interest and investment that's comparable to assembling several of the other, the other committees or boards. So in my opinion, I think that's a very substantive primary role. I have, I have been the liaison to transportation circulation in the past. And it's interesting, but certainly not as time consuming, even though you're primary. So if you're comfortable with those two being your primary buckets of activity right now, I think that's fine unless I'll turn it over to the rest of the commission. If anybody wants to offer volunteer to swap out anything else with, to give Commissioner Bonderson more. But I don't see why that would be necessary, just from an equity perspective.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do agree with you. ABR is very substantive, very substantial, and it's kept me very busy on a very regular schedule. They have not missed a meeting and not missed a beat, even under COVID-19. They've been very, very thorough. So if it's all right, we can leave it as it is, unless there's something of urgent need. But at this point, I'm very comfortable keeping my primaries as they are.
Okay, very good. Back to you. Anything else, Commissioner Reed? You, it looks like now, if my notes are correct, you'll have two primaries, downtown parking and Plaza de Leguera. One is a solo primary downtown parking. And then you're going to work in tandem with Commissioner Whiskom on Plaza de Leguera Subcommittee. And then you're an alternate, you'll be an alternate on Historic Landmarks Commission. Do I have that correct?
Yeah, Chair Schwartz. So yeah, in in terms of my side deal making, that that's it.
Okay. Let's see. Anything else just to the other commissioners? Have you found scheduling conflicts that have come up? So much of life has been in flux for us in the last month. Commissioner Whiskom?
I just simply want to congratulate Commissioner Reed on his negotiating skills on the sidebar. He did, he did really well. He ended up with two, two committees that he really wanted to to be on. And I think he's going to be a great asset on both. So I look forward to his input. Thank you very much.
Okay, very good. So just want to conclude, but but by way of asking the other commissioners, anything else we need to look at before we summarize our 2020 PC liaison roster? And and to ensure that Mr. Busk has everything notated correctly. Nothing else? Okay, very good. So with that, I think we've concluded that item, unless Mr. Busk, you have any questions or a need for us to refer to this document. or a need for us to refer to this document before we wrap that up?
Thank you, Chair Schwartz. My only question would be to confirm that Commissioner Escobedo will now be the permanent primary for the Airport Commission.
Ahah, that's right. We have it noted as temporary. Commissioner Escobedo, could you come back on and let us know of your interest in scheduling availability?
Airport Commission works for me.
Okay, thank you. That's, I'm so glad you noticed that, Mr. Busk. So now that's permanent. Excellent. And again, we said on the new Water Vision Santa Barbara Stakeholder Group, when that gets formed and we know what the meeting schedule is, staff will come back to us because we may do another rebalancing when we need to start participating there. Okay, I think we've concluded that item, and it's almost 6 o'clock. I really want to thank everybody for their patience and investing so much time. I think as we continue in this virtual mode, we'll be able to improve our efficiencies on the mechanical side of using the technology. But I also don't want to shortcut the opportunity for full participation, not only by our commission, including, and very specifically, the three new members of our commission, but also the public. I think this is, it's not only very different, I think it's an awkward method for the public to participate. They're just not accustomed to this. And so it may take a few more hearings or a couple of additional hearings for the public to learn how to do that if they want to. And I, I don't want them to feel deterred in any way. And then just as a wrap-up, last week, I referenced some comments by Governor Newsom. And again, you know, continuing to watch and take into consideration his press conference information, as I think most everybody knows. This week, he outlined six critical indicators for the state that will be considered before modifying any stay-at-home order and other COVID-19 interventions. And I, I bring this up because I, as I'm sure other commissioners and probably staff, receive questions from the public about how long will